I think you said go.
Go.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Welcome to the Town Board Work Session, March 10th, 2020. If everyone could please first silence your cellphones. Silence those cellphones for me. And then second, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna take a moment of silence remembering our neighbors in New Rochelle, Somers, and all those affected by the ongoing coronavirus. Thank you. We've got a bit of a treat tonight. Tommy, I don't know if you can pan out or show what I'm looking at, but we've got a great crowd because the champs are in the house. And we are so excited. That's right. We are so excited to welcome the state champs, the Lakeland Field Hockey Team, to Town Hall and recognize them for their absolutely amazing accomplishment. I know we have a few dignitaries also here. We have members of Lakeland School Board who are here. And we have the Lakeland School Superintendent, Dr. George Stone, good friend of ours who is here. Dr. Stone, do you mind just taking the podium for two seconds?
There is no podium.
There is no podium. Dr. Stone, would you mind taking a seat here?
Not at all.
And real quick, I know it's on everyone's mind. I want to start by stating that Councilwoman Roker is not here because she injured her back. And Councilman, well, this isn't Councilman Lachman, but Councilman Diana, who usually sits to my left, is home with a cold. Not, he does not have any symptoms related to what's going on. But while we have you, Dr. Stone, I know that you and I have been in constant contact with each other over the coronavirus. And so if you wouldn't mind just sharing just a quick update from Lakeland School District for the folks at home about the great work that you're doing.
Sure, thank you. Not really the greatest opening act for the champs. But we are in Lakeland and all of the neighboring districts in this area. We're trying to provide the public with as much information as we can. I've had probably six conferences in the last two or three days. We have a daily phone conference with County Executive George Latimer. We've been in contact with SED, with the State Department of Health, with the County Department of Health. I can't say enough about our nurses and our head nurse, Mary Beth Gaietin, our district physician, Louis Corsero, who handle all of the determinations in terms of health risks and moving forward. As far as Lakeland goes, we have no confirmed cases at this time. But we have a number of people, like every district, that have a second or third connection to someone who was diagnosed and are in quarantine for that purpose and being tested. There's been some confusion initially as to who would make determinations in terms of closings or quarantines, whether it would be the State Department of Health or the County Department of Health. Mr. Latimer was under the impression that the county had no authority. Then the state issued guidelines yesterday indicating that the county would make decisions. So hopefully they're working in conjunction with our health officials with each case that we submit. I get a number of calls each day about someone who was related to someone. And we refer all of those to our health officials to determine what comes next. Should there be a diagnosed case in the schools, as per the guidance of the State Health Department, we will have to close a mandatory at least one day to clean and sanitize. And then beyond that, their determination will be based upon, they have what they call health detectives that meet with the party to determine who they came in contact with, how far that spreads, how many people they need to talk to, and how many people they need to test to see how far it goes to try and contain it. Obviously, you know, we've said it a thousand times, the cleaning and the washing, staying home if people are sick. We've had a number of people that have seen doctors and their doctors say they do not have coronavirus symptoms. They do have flu-like symptoms, regular flu-like symptoms. And some of the doctors are having trouble getting Corona tests. They're testing for regular flu. And if that comes back positive, they're also taking swabs and sending them to the CDC, which takes another two or three days when we require them to be quarantined for all that time. Again, we'll provide daily updates.
You have been, it's been great.
With as much information as we can.
We try to share that on our social media. I know that you've sent an email out. You posted on your social media. We share it as well through all of our channels of communication.
We appreciate that. We've been hearing from everybody, really positive feedback that while they're nervous and, you know, concerned, they're very grateful that we're trying to provide as much information as we can. And just another note, we are cleaning and sanitizing every night. We have.
What's going on with your school buses?
Yeah, the school buses as well. We're, I believe either today or tomorrow. I haven't talked to George Prime this evening, our Director of Facilities, but we have 10 huge machines on order. Well, five should have been in today or tomorrow. They can do a bus in a minute.
Great.
They do the entire thing. And what the residue is non-toxic and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't need to be wiped down. Once it's misted over the entire surfaces, it's good to go. So they'll be able to do all the schools that way every night. All of our custodians and facilities workers are being trained. They'll have protective gear. So we're doing everything we possibly can to keep it clean and sterile.
And we appreciate it. And the communication, like I said, has been crucial, just sharing as much information as we can with the public. And I know that it's definitely a worrisome time. It's unprecedented what we're dealing with right now.
Right.
But I gotta tell you, I feel very confident working with you, Dr. Hatter from Yorktown Central School District, Chief Noble, and all of our partners in government. We really, I think, have done a great job sharing and exchanging information and doing our best to quell any concerns that comes our way. So I just want to thank you for your partnership and your leadership and that as well as your entire school board, because I know they've been fantastic and a great partner as well.
Yeah, we do. I should introduce, we have the President of the Board here tonight, Mike Daly. Vice President Denise Ness, I saw. Trustee Don Pankowski. Any others? Don't want to miss anybody. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
I have a question, you know, how about the cafeteria and all that? They are all under control, the food preparation, delivery and beginning. Because some people bring it, food from home and some they purchase it too there.
Right, well, in terms of food from home, obviously if students bring food from home for their lunch, we can't really control that. But everything else, like typically, a lot of our schools have had bake sales and fundraisers where people have prepared food. What we've done through our food service supervisor is we are prohibiting anything that's not coming from a commercially inspected kitchen. That doesn't mean, obviously, it's 100% safe, but at least we have some chain of inspection to fall back on. So we have just, for the time being, we have a restriction on that as well.
And I did a lot of public terminals, computer terminals where people share it and they should wipe it out, you know, because that's.
Yeah, most of our, most of our staff users do have, we have all kinds of wipes. We have, we actually have had for a long time kits in our schools and encourage people to wipe their keyboards down, miss their keyboards if they have that kind of a product. But we have that in the schools and in our offices for people to use to wipe down. And it also has, you know, first aid materials as well.
This is the best way to shake the hand, guys. Everybody, I have never seen this many people. I want you to, everybody, come here at the budget hearing, okay?
Right, right.
Thank you and congratulations.
And just to sort of waylay fears in the food service world, the standard protocol is exactly what the Board of Health is requesting that you do for stopping the spread of the virus. It's the constant hand washing. Every time you take off gloves, change your gloves, a sanitizer solution used at all times, and stay home if you're sick. It's all, all the basic standard protocol Board of Health requires of any food service establishment.
Thank you very much.
Only thing we can control is viruses mutating so fast. We cannot measure the speed of the virus mutating, you know, and the rate of reaction in the nose is so fast, you cannot measure it, you know? And they multiply very quickly. So good health to all of us, you know?
Basic hygiene, wash those hands. We got.
Hopefully this too shall pass.
This too shall pass. This too shall pass.
They snuck this one in on you. Couldn't retire on like a nice, icy slide.
Challenge it to the end. Don't go anywhere. So Coach Sarsen, let's, we have, we have a very special presentation. Where's the coach? Come on up. Coach, how are you? I'd shake your hand, but we're practicing good hygiene, so there you go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations indeed. If you don't mind me asking, I got one question.
Yeah, have a seat.
Please, sit, please.
She's at attention here.
I know. Relax, enjoy.
You are looking in that camera, so don't worry about it, okay?
It's like a radio show or a TV show. So I got it, what's the, what, I have to ask. When you think about 10 out of 11, right?
Yeah.
10 state championships out of the last 11. That is insane. That is amazing. And I know that, I know that you're very humble about it, but I gotta know, what's the secret? You gotta tell me, what's the secret? How do you get 10, how do you, I mean, that's incredible.
Hard work.
Yeah?
Great athletes, great supportive families, and a good support program at Lakeland.
It's awesome.
And putting their sticks in their hand before they can walk.
Yeah.
Instead of rattles, they get field hockey sticks.
I mean, it's just, when I'm reading the stats, I know you, so this past year it was 2-0 over Garden City, right? And they beat you the year before, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so a little sweet revenge.
Apparently.
Apparently. Apparently, a little sweet revenge, taking it back home. And, you know, this community is just so proud of everything that you've accomplished and the girls behind you have accomplished. But also, again, 10 state championships. I mean, it's a decade of dominance is really what it is. And so when I was talking with Denise Ness, as well as Dr. Stone, and I asked if you've been to the Town Board before, and I just thought that it was something so special for our community to celebrate, not just this year's accomplishment, but the last decade's worth of accomplishments. And it really is just something that I hope that, I know that this community recognizes. And it's just incredible. I keep thinking of Gino from Yukon. I mean, that's who I feel like I'm sitting across from right now. It's really special, so. But I just, on behalf of the town, I just want to thank you for your great leadership, for doing amazing things with not just, again, your players from this year, but players over the last decade. And just know how proud this community is to support the Hornets and support our decades worth of dominance of state championships. So thank you. We appreciate it.
And how many are seniors? Raise your hand, those who are senior.
How many seniors we got?
Well, this is your last chance to be here. And you're gonna be successful even in college, wherever you go.
I think you have a couple of seniors who are moving on to play in college too?
They're all moving on.
They're all, excuse me, all moving on playing.
No, wait, let me, one is playing lacrosse.
We won't hold it against her, it's okay.
And I don't. And the other six are playing field hockey.
Awesome. That's great.
So, so I just, I just want to just give you my total respect because my daughter spent six years as the athletic trainer at UMass Lowell. And their women's field hockey, which went from D2 to D1 while she was there, actually won a national championship. And I have never in my life seen such a tough group of kids. And when I say tough, I mean, oh, you know, it's only a small tear to my ACL. Can I go back out? Where with her, but she also had men's basketball in the fall. And they were like, oh, you know, I have a hang now. I don't know if I could go out there. So she always said her toughest guys were her field hockey team. And I know, I know the dedication that you guys have to put in. I know the risk for injury. And I know how dedicated you have to be to just be in the game, let alone win 10 out of 11. It's just amazing. So congratulations, my hat's off to you. And, you know, really, really excited to be recognizing you.
Before we call the rest of the team up, I just, one more question. How much is it, and forgive me if I'm stepping out of bounds, but no pun intended. How much of it, I know physical capability is huge. How much is it mental, do you think, for players to get over that edge, to get to that championship level?
Yeah, I think it's crucial. I think you have to believe. I think you have to trust your skills and your abilities. And if you repeat them in practice and trust those skills, then you'll be confident and I think that gives you an edge.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah, can I say something? Winner never quit and a quitter never win. You are the winner, okay?
That's right.
Thank you.
Well, we're thrilled to have you all here. We'd love to have the team come up. We've got certificates for the entire team. They're in alphabetical order, just so you know. And we have certificates for your coaching staff as well. And again, we just want to thank everyone for doing such an amazing job and representing our community. And to the parents, we also want to thank our parents because it's a team effort from the, from the top down. And they don't get to practice on their own and they don't get to the games on their own and they don't get, you know, a lot of things on their own. So we know how much our parents are an integral part of this whole process. And so we want to acknowledge and thank all the, all the parents. And is there anything else you want to add, Coach?
I want to give a shout out to my two assistant coaches, Danielle Fiori, who was a captain in 2003, state champion. And Shannon Scavelli, who was also a captain and a state champion three times in 2009, 10 and 11.
Awesome.
So.
And if we could also, we also want to acknowledge our Athletic Director, Dan Belfi, his assistant Rebecca DeSisto.
Awesome.
And the Principal of Lakeland High School.
Thank you very much, you all. Thank you. So we're gonna be back here in a year going 11 out of 12, right?
Maybe.
Is that, right?
I don't know.
Well, Jen already printed most of the certificates up for next year, just saying.
Oh, good.
I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm joking, no pressure. No pressure. All right, well, listen, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We'd like to invite the whole team up if we can give you your certificates and take a quick picture and.
And those parents, the parents with the seven or the six going on to college have to learn how to tailgate because that was one of the big things at the games. We used to go for the tailgate parties.
Tennessee championships, I know. This is behind me, all right, come on, girls. Let's do this.
Who's going up to college? What college? You ready for those winters? We're gonna get some of you up here, Coach, come on in. And let's get your two assistants, throw your two assistants. Throw it here, come on. All right, so we're gonna get some of you girls behind us up here. I'm not too tall, so you can stand behind me, come on. We're gonna go down one. Back over, we're gonna get some of you, Jen, Jen, do a little directing back here. Some of you back up here with couches.
Danielle, come on up. Frankie, come on up.
Here we go, one more step. Harris, how we look, is it good? You hear everybody? All right, here we go. Champs on three. Ready, one, two, three. Champs! All right. Thank you again.
Great job, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Very nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's enough. Thank you.
Ladies, you all have to stay till the end, you know that, right?
No, you don't. No, you don't. All right. I ask you to make your way, if you're, if you're planning on staying, great. If not, enjoy your evening. We're gonna move on with our, with our agenda shortly. You get the camera out of here. Is it hanging or not?
I'd give him a minute.
We're just gonna give folks just a minute to make their way out.
You know, it's amazing not only winning all that, but imagine like what it does for these young ladies to be a part of that.
You know, I remember.
It's like, it's like being a Yankee on a dynasty team.
Easy, easy. No, exactly what it is. But I remember, I remember playing soccer here. I grew up playing soccer in town. I played high school soccer all four years. And in three years, in the three years I played on varsity, we won four games. Combined.
Sounds like my basketball career.
And so to look at 10 out of 11 state championships is just.
Unbelievable.
Incredible, absolutely incredible.
Unbelievable.
It's just an amazing accomplishment. We're just giving them a few more minutes to make their way to the, to the back and out. So exciting for the town.
Yeah, very, very exciting. Thank you.
Have a great night, congratulations, everyone. Thank you again.
And parents, great job.
Go Hornets! All right, moving on. We are.
I'm glad everyone didn't leave.
I know, we still have a few people left. Welcome to command. Want to bring up IBM, John Taggeter to join us. How's everyone doing, Art? What's going on? We have a very exciting project that we want to talk about for the IBM campus.
Thank you, sir.
Who's John? Thank you.
Right next door.
It's right next to her, you all. Diana, you know. Awesome. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves to, just for the record.
I want you to know that that table you sign off, okay?
Hi, I'm Craig Paper. I'm the Global Operations Research Manager for IBM Research.
And I'm Arnie Vimba. I'm the Site Energy Engineer at Watson Research.
Awesome. We have John Taggeter, our Town Planner, with us as well. Yes, correct?
I want you to start with where was the second generation solar cell was invented? In IBM?
In IBM Research.
Yes, that's right, Harry Hall and all those companies.
So we're, we're here talking about a carport project for the IBM campus.
Yes.
And I know that.
Solar carport.
Correct, it's a solar carport project. One of the largest solar carport projects.
In the state.
In the state of New York.
That's right.
Which is very exciting.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the statistics in terms of the size of the.
Why don't you walk us through, why don't you walk us through the project? And then we can provide some insight from, from Mr. Taggeter as well as the Board.
Sure, so hopefully the.
We're getting a presentation up on the screen?
On the screen, yeah. I think she's working on it, she has it.
Thank you, Maura.
So, yes, so this is a solar carport project. This is going to be, we'd like to install this in the rear parking lot of our research facility here in Yorktown. So in terms of why we're doing solar, we have environmental goals and objectives within IBM to do, use more renewable power, more green energy, et cetera, recut our CO2 emissions. There are a lot of New York State and ConEd initiatives in place for renewable power. New York State this past year announced some, you know, nation-leading clean energy and climate goals, one of which is 6 gigawatts of distributed energy power by 2025. So that's a very, very ambitious goal. Why are we doing this in Yorktown? Because it's a strategic, long-term site. We're, you're planning to be there for a long time.
Can you say that again?
It's a very strategic, long-term site. We're not planning to move anywhere.
IBM is planning on, not, not planning on going anywhere for a long time. That's what I heard.
I thought I heard long, long time.
Long, long time, right, Craig?
I thought we were gonna talk about taxes.
Well, no, that's not this meeting.
You see the deck?
We all, I gotta tell you.
We're making a huge commitment to the site.
And that's great to hear. And this town loves having the IBM Research Center as a cornerstone of this community. And I know that we have some great people who've, are a product of your company, right, Councilman Patel?
That's right.
That's right. So it's great to hear that you're gonna be here for quite some time.
Yes, and all kidding aside, I mean, this was, this is a serious, because these are long-term contracts when you do a project like this. This is a 20 and 25-year type commitment.
Right.
So IBM doesn't take this lightly. So this truly is a long-term commitment for us to the Yorktown site. In terms of carport, why carports? We have limited open space. If you're familiar with the site, there really isn't that much green space at the location.
And your, your presentation's up on the screen.
Yes, if you can go to the next slide, please, or two slides ahead, please.
Folks at home will be seeing this as well.
Yes, so we don't have that much open space on the, in the campus. So carports are a very practical thing to do there. We do have a large parking lot. It also minimizes the visual impact to the residents and the neighbors since the facility will essentially be invisible to people driving by or the neighbors. And then we do have some partners here from Enter Solar. That's a corporate partnership that we're doing. They're gonna be actually executing the project for us. And they're gonna talk a little bit about their company as well as a company, Amoresco. They don't have a rep here tonight, but they're gonna mention Amoresco as well. Next slide, please. So this gives you kind of a bird's eye view of the parking lot. So you can see the semicircular building, you know, the iconic building of the Yorktown Research Center, as well as all the carports in the parking lot. And in terms of size, we've got some statistics here. So this is a 5-megawatt system, which I know to, you know, many people, that really doesn't mean much. So to kind of put it into some perspective, that is about 88% of our Watson average demand. If this, you know, on a hot summer, sunny August day, when this is putting out peak power, this would actually produce about 88% of our site electric demand.
That's awesome.
And it could power 3,900 homes, you know, at, you know, peak, peak production annually. It, you know, because solar only works during, you know, typically eight or 10 hours a day. The numbers aren't quite as high, but 13% of our overall usage and about equivalent of about 572 homes that it could power year-round. Next slide, please. So some of the considerations, I mentioned the, the system will be completely shielded from the street view. The canopy-type system that we're doing does have some additional benefits in terms of cars being parked in the shade. There is snow and rain protection for cars and we will have some integrated lighting. It's also helpful to ConEd in terms of stabilizing the grid. There's a lot of concerns about power in the ConEd territory with the shutdown of Indian Point, et cetera. So this is a grid-stabilizing entity. They're, they're really encouraging distributed power like this. And we are doing this inverted Y-type structure with a roof decking and rain management. So we're actually capturing the rainwater with our, with the system. And it's, we're mainly doing it as a safety concern so that we don't have icicles forming on the edge of the, of the decking that we would have to be concerned about.
It funnels the rainwater.
Funnels, yes, funnels the water in and will actually be captured and sent to our storm, storm drain system.
Perfect.
Another thing worth noting that the town would be happy with, we're gonna spend $600,000 upgrading our drains for this, which is good water management, right?
Great, that's great as well.
And it's clean water anyway, right?
Yeah, it'll be cleaner.
How about the storage, you know, is there anything coming up in here, storage?
At this point, we're not doing battery storage. We have looked at it. It's, it's not, the economics aren't tremendous with it right now. It's something we will look at again in the future as battery costs come down. There are also some safety concerns with, with large batteries. You know, I'm sure you've heard about lithium batteries and, you know, things burning. So this would be a very large battery installation. So there are some safety concerns. So we want to get comfortable with that as well as the economics need to get a little better.
Of course, absolutely. Absolutely.
So this is just, we're going to go through a number of renderings. We can go through these quickly. This is just an aerial view of the parking lot. Next slide, please.
I think this one, you can see the Y configuration better.
Right.
You can see how it's tilted in, so the runoff would be going to the middle of the panels and then filtering down, correct?
That's right.
The standing light poles that are in the park lot now will be removed, and the lighting will be provided through that.
Underneath?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a later image that actually shows that, kind of an underside view of the canopies with lighting. Next slide, please. This is, this is an image here. You can see this is a similar installation. It's a Y-type canopy. You can see the drain lines coming down at the columns. And you can also see the lighting there, the small, small squares in the center there are lights.
Are those going to be LEDs, do you know?
Yes, they're LEDs.
Great, perfect.
Yep. Next slide. Just another view of the parking lot as well as the type of module that we're going to be using. These are approximately 4 feet by 6 feet solar panels, and we'll have approximately 13,000 of them in this installation. So fairly large install. Next slide, please. Just another rendering of the Y-type canopy. Next slide. Another view. Another view. Go ahead, please. This is just a view coming out of the backside of our building. So this is, you know, be an employee exit, you know, coming out to the carports. Next slide, please. This is a local similar installation at Manhattanville College, which we went to visit. So this is a Y canopy as well. They don't, they did not do roof decking or drainage here. This is a slightly more basic system. Next slide.
So that one did not have drainage?
That did not have drainage.
And yours will have the drainage and the lighting?
Yes. So this is MasterCard in Purchase, the headquarters of MasterCard. This is a single-tilt system. They do have drainage. You can see an actual drainage line coming down, the end of the one system there. So they do have drainage and decking. Next slide. So in terms of where we're at on this project right now, we have completed all of our internal reviews, of which there were many. So this is strongly supported by our real estate organization globally, as well as our research management, including Craig, who's here tonight. We have completed a big checkpoint with ConEd. It's called the CESA, or you can read what CESA stands for there, but that's a fairly significant piece of work that's done.
So essentially, they've done, you've done the study, and ConEd's approved the addition of the panels?
ConEd has looked at it. They know what they need to do to, for the substation to support the system. They know what equipment they have to put on-site, and they're pretty much ready to go.
Great for ConEd, because as Ollie said, it helps stabilize their system, which benefits everyone on the system.
Yep.
We are working on, we're in a contract stage between IBM and EnterSolar and Amoresco. You'll hear a little bit more about EnterSolar and Amoresco in a moment. And we are starting to, you know, starting the permitting process with the town of Yorktown. We'll be bringing, you know, we've just started site surveys, starting, you know, do our due diligence on the engineering work that needs to be done before we come to you. But we'll be submitting, starting that shortly.
Yep. I know that previously, we had met with some of our department heads just to give you a lay of the land of what's needed from a permitting standpoint. So this way, hopefully, we can streamline that process and make sure that we minimize as many hiccups as we can.
We've probably started this project over a year ago, Ollie. How long did we start this? I mean, we worked this hard to try to get the best layout for both the town and for IBM. We looked at every, we have 200 acres of land there, 300 if you count across the street.
Yep.
This seemed to make the most sense for the community, for IBM, and for the solar company.
Right.
Employee benefits too. You don't have to clean your car.
Why don't you, can you talk a little bit, or do you want, you want Amoresco or the power, or EnterSolar to talk about the benefit it's going to actually have for the employees?
Sure. With that, you know, I can introduce...
Or we can get to that later, that's fine. That's fine, if you want to continue, that's fine.
No, that was pretty much it. I was going to introduce EnterSolar at this point, anyway.
Okay, great.
But is there any, you know, visibility for charging the car over there? Some people, you know...
You're going to have some battery, you're going to have some charging stations.
So we have, we had four charging stations, and just last year, we increased it to six, which is still not a lot, but it's more than most locations. And after this project is done, we're going to look at, maybe make sense to expand that.
Are they getting used a lot, or...?
Yes, they have actually an online database that the people who let the cars kind of communicate, okay, move your car, it's charged. And they run it themselves.
That's cool.
It seems to work.
It's been a long time, it's going all right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've gone from two to four to six, and I see that continuing.
Continuing to grow.
Wonderful, yeah.
I'm going to ask Mr. Taggeter real quick before we bring up thoughts on the, you want to provide some insight from your standpoint on the project. I know carports, it'll be the first carport, solar carport in Yorktown?
Yes, this will be the first solar carport in Yorktown. This project is a benign project. It's on a big piece of property. It's ringed by the IBM's building. It's over top of their own parking lot. And being a large property as it is, it really doesn't have the impacts that...
Visual impacts.
...associate with it, which is mostly the visual impact. So this is a great project to learn from the experts that these guys are partnering with to help our law become better so it's evenly and equally applied and does the things that we need it to do. And so we support it from that standpoint. Obviously, green energy is a big coming thing. It's been coming for quite a while now. And we have, are trying to stay ahead of the curve. Some communities are a little bit ahead of us, but I think we're right in there with putting together our laws and getting some of this stuff to come to Yorktown.
Yeah, we've been very much engaged in this conversation. You, myself, Councilwoman Roker. Again, we went to the NIPA conference. We've had a number of these conversations. Now, just to be clear, though, we need a solar law in order for them to proceed.
We need a solar law, which we've been working on. We're now working on it again now that we're in springtime. We're also working on a battery storage law.
Correct.
There are a lot of inquiries that we are getting. The public knows of a couple of them at the least, but there's many others that are just inquiries or hopes and dreams of some solar developers that are out there looking at property. So it's really a coming thing.
I think I have about, and Jenna, you can probably confirm this, we probably have about three or four a week just about renewable energy projects coming to town.
You know, in the New York State, all the association of the town, the entire state, they had a very big display. And I have some paper, Okaeshi, sending to you about the laws and governing like that.
Definitely.
Just last month, it was very nice, very big one.
They've updated, and the last we checked was they updated their model ordinance, which we were reviewing. And then since our meeting, our initial meeting with IBM, we've gotten some fantastic feedback and ideas. We also, I met with the Westchester Land Trust, who provided additional insight as well. So I think we're getting a very comprehensive look and feedback to make sure that the law that we propose is right for the community. And I think we've done a good job taking our time with it, but also realize that there's a lot of projects that are requiring us to get this law across the finish line.
Right.
For the benefit of the community.
Right, and the state and the nation, really, are looking to this...
Yes.
...to help the energy infrastructure. And I think everyone should be reminded that this is energy infrastructure, necessary energy infrastructure. And if you, everyone can recall some of the downtime that we've had over the last number of years.
Ten years, yeah.
Yep.
These kinds of projects will help prevent those, and will add more energy into our system, which is very much needed. The other thing to note is that in the area in which these are located, it helps the folks and the energy users around it.
Exactly.
Doesn't go traveling up to Albany or down to, you know, wherever. It stays close to where it's being generated.
Right.
And also will be some supplement to Indian Point, you know, they're closing, because that's also a very big advantage.
That's right.
And by the way, it was invented right at IBM, you know? We are a little bit behind, but Hillington Road has a very nice project you have visited, right? It was very nicely done, yeah.
It's great also to see, I think economically, that we're utilizing, you know, we're utilizing something that, you're monetizing your parking lot.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely, really great project.
I think it's just fantastic, rather than going to open space or any other option that you could have taken. You're, you know, utilizing space that's already been developed, and, you know, I don't want to say it's underutilized, but undermonetized, I guess we can describe it.
Turning dead space into a profit center.
And, yeah, right.
Plus increasing the safety to your employees.
And they're, and they're going to be happy coming out to a cooler car in the summer and potentially no ice scraping in the winter, et cetera.
No snow in the winter, yeah.
So there's kind of a win-win-win.
And reduce the salt use, right, on the parking lot?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That benefit.
We are thinking that's probably an environmental impact also. Yeah, will be less salt use.
Yeah, that's great.
So Craig, you went on the Blue, you know, Blue Daniel River. You saw the solar panel, every city and every town, both sides of the river, you know, all the way from Germany to Budapest. I cannot believe they are really...
Well, we're catching up, right?
We're getting there.
Yeah.
This is a real good start.
I know, it's very, very good.
It supports the state initiative. They just announced last week, I think it was, 30,000 acres of solar panels being proposed essentially in New York for underutilized farms. I mean, so it's, it's coming. And so I agree with, I agree with John's assessment. I don't think we're at the forefront yet. I think that we're, but I don't think we're at the back of the pack. I think we're right in the middle. And this is definitely going to help us, propel us.
And some of the farmland, if they use like this, you know, where there is, they can grow the grass and things like that, low, low-height crops, and they have both things available to them, you know, and then...
So why don't we bring up EnterSolar and see if you have, love to hear from you and your team and... How we doing?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Reisman.
Hey, Ben.
I'm from EnterSolar. I also have Mark Demuel and Art Taylor with me, who are also involved in the project. So I'll just give a brief background on our company. We are a leading national developer of commercial industrial solar projects for corporate end-users. For the most part, we do onsite projects almost entirely. We're based in New York City, so we're local. We really do have, for the most part, a historically tri-state focus, so a huge amount of projects in New York State and ConEdison. We are the leading developer in ConEdison territory and have been around for 12 years. Additionally, we're a strategic partner of EDF Renewables, who's a Fortune 200 company. So we're backstopped by an extremely large multinational corporate. And we have another division internally called Max Solar, which is our O&amp;M division. So they'll be caring for and operating the system after installation throughout the life. If we can go to the next slide, yeah. So these are just a selection of some of our ConEdison-based projects. Many are very, one of them is very similar to this. Regeneron on the top left, actually located in Tarrytown. So that's a similar canopy project, but just actually installed on a parking garage, on the top level of a parking garage. The remainder are corporate campuses as well as facilities throughout ConEdison territory. Many are similar structures to the one we're proposing here.
Is it Armagh Swisserie, is that a parking lot?
That is a ground mound, actually.
It's a ground mound, okay.
So yeah, that's right on, right on the ground. If we can just go to the next slide as well. So these are our New York projects. As you can see, a vast majority of them are located within ConEdison territory. And then additionally, a good amount of them in the upstate region are also partnered with Amoresco, who will be our financing and ownership partner on this project. So we do have a working relationship existing with that company, which expedites and makes really the whole process streamlined and smooth. And if we flip to the next...
So if I'm reading this, if I'm reading this correctly, is this going to be your largest, or other than Sydney?
This will be our largest, other than Sydney, in New York. Our largest canopy project in New York, yep. Flipping to the next slide. Great, so this is just, these are just some metrics on Amoresco, who will be the financing partner for the project and the ultimate system owner. Just, you know, they are really diversified across all energy sectors and are a fantastic partner to bring in on this project. Going to the next slide, these are just some metrics on their asset ownership as well as their generating capacity. So they do own an extremely large amount of renewable energy assets.
I can see that.
Yeah, and are a strong partner for this project. And that's really, those are the materials we prepared for today. Thank you for having us in.
Well, no, we appreciate it. We're looking forward to partnering with you. And frankly, I, I mean, IBM, I mean, I don't expect anything but the best.
Well, we did a lot of due diligence before we came in.
I figured so. But to John's point, it's a great partner for us to have, you know, in regards to our law, to make sure that, you know, what we are looking at and crafting is the right thing for the community. And who better to bounce ideas off of than the folks at IBM?
Yeah, I've been starting to work with Dennis of EnterSolar, you know, giving his commentary on the law, which has been, so far, been very helpful.
Very helpful.
Right, right.
Very helpful.
Wonderful. Can I say something else? You know, all the buildings in New York City, the new buildings, is there any place they have a solar cell in windows? Because it looks like, it's unbelievable, you know?
So I've heard of projects that utilize the window-based photovoltaics in Europe. It's less efficient, less cost-effective. I have not heard of any projects in the United States proposed or installed similarly, but I have heard of some, a lot of research and some in Europe.
Solar Window Technology is one of the companies. They, I think they're having a problem finding a suitable way to transfer the energy through. So it's unfortunate, because it is a great opportunity to...
Yeah, New York City, that would be...
We'll get there. I have no doubt about it. I have no doubt about it. But I really want to thank everyone for coming. We're very excited about the project.
This is really great, you know?
Yep.
And unless there's any other questions?
No, thank you.
Then we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, where is Kenny Rundell? Our fantastic water distribution superintendent. Kenny, come on up. You can tap John out. John, thanks so much.
Have a good night, John.
We got some chairs here, just not in front of the blue. That's, that's the, that's request from our cameraman in the back. So we're going to also invite up, we have a presentation that Kenny, you're going to be doing regarding, with Census.
Census, correct.
Not, not Census 2020.
No, not, no, it's Census with the next.
Which, by the way, it is, it is Census Month, just so everyone remembers, but not this Census. That's, how are you? Good to see you.
Kenny, it's 10 years behind, but you're going to catch up, right?
We're going to get there.
So if one of you can sit here, and one of you can sit here. How's everyone?[1582.04] I'd shake hands, but we're showing good, we're showing good coronavirus hygiene over here, so.
Okay. Thank you for bringing us in again. Last time I was at the work session, we were talking about commercial water meters and some language to be changed.
Are we doing commercial water first or are you doing the Census presentation?
Census presentation.
Perfect.
These guys drove a few hours to get here, so we figured we'd try to get them out as soon as we can.
Thank you.
But they put together a nice kind of overview of our whole metering system in New York Town. So I think it's valuable for the residents and for the town board also to be able to see like what, what we have, where we were, what we have and where we could be. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
So yeah, my name's Tom. I am the area, or account development manager for New York State with Census.
Okay.
My colleague on the left here is Mike.
Hey, Mike.
Mike works for Core and Main, which is our exclusive distributor for New York State. So Mike's going to do a demo on some of the portals and things like that that incorporate with your water system or could be with your water system, so.
Great.
If you guys want to go through the side, go through the side.
Do you have any handouts or anything?
Unfortunately, no, we were, we did not.
Yeah, they'll print it out and they'll circulate, but it's also on the TV, so we can, we can follow along there.
There was some student that did these things for you, a little homework for us, okay?
We did, we did have some students also do a presentation.
Real quick, just a couple of introductions in the back. Jason, you guys hand up there.
How are you? You can join us, there's plenty of room. You're good, all right, smart.
He's a manager of technical solutions, so he comes in and helps troubleshoot when things go wrong.
Okay.
Along with Mike. Mike is also the technical guy from Core and Main.
Great.
Who helps you guys, helps Kenny and Kathy when they have troubles. And anything else you got purchasing too, that all goes through Core and Main. So yeah, we're going to go through kind of where we're at, where we need to be or where we could be going, and then just kind of talk about some benefits to you guys.
Okay.
About the benefits to the whole smart city system.
Right.
To your residents. And then, like I said, Mike's going to do some demo for you on the customer portal. And then the portal that is, I guess, water department facing, yeah. So that would be what these guys see, not residents and things like that.
But the infrastructure is already there, right, Kenny?
Yeah, the infrastructure. And I was just going to say this because we met with the.
You already have ready-made. And thank you for bringing, you are 10 years behind, but we're going to catch up.
We are going to catch up. And we did meet with the Joint Water Works last week. We did have a conversation with them as well. They were very supportive of this conversation.
They two are also in the same spot as you.
Right.
We got, we got several people in the area that are doing Beacon. Newburgh are also involved in the same, same technology right now, too.
Fantastic.
Westchester Joint.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
That's, yeah, Westchester Joint Water Works. We had our, we had our meeting on Friday and they were very excited to hear that you were coming in for this presentation.
Good, good. So the brand name that we give this is FlexNet. That's the Census brand name for the AMI system. You may have heard it, Smart City. FlexNet is the name that we give it. So this project actually started back in 2011. As you mentioned, yeah, we've been very slowly coming along, so. But good news is, is we got, the infrastructure is up. So just a quick breakdown, there are a total of just over 10,000 services or, you know, residents, commercial, both combined. We got 9,700, just a little bit over that for the residential side. Commercial side is just about under 300. As you mentioned, the base stations is the base, the radio antennas. That's all they are. And that's the technology that's talking to the meters instead of people, you know, driving by or walking house to house to get the reads. So we do have three of them up, one of which was actually contributed by Census and Core and Main. We picked up the cost on that when we put those in.
Okay.
Where we're at right now, as far as the upgrade status, it's on the residential side, we have about just over 4,300 services of that 9,755 complete. Remaining, just over 5,000 still need to be done, okay? And what that is, is the actual technology itself. We're trying to get it standardized the same, so everything is identical. And that just makes things easier for everybody.
So, and Kenny, you talked about this last year. Can you just quickly explain to the residents what it means, though, when we only have, when we have basically half of our customers are using current technology and the other half are using obsolete technology?
Right. So the current technology, right? With the water meters, if you have, if the residents have a leak, we can get alarms sent to that versus the old technology. When Kathy and her staff goes and reads the water meter, it could be three or four months till that leak is discovered and then they open up a water bill and it's been leaking for four months or three months. And I'm sure these fellows are going to go into it a little bit more. But with this FlexNet system, we have the ability to, you could go in through the customer portal, set up your parameters, and if you exceed those parameters, you can get an email notifying you of.
Or text message, yeah.
Or text message, right? And again, for the, I call them the old outdated meters. You know, we're sending staff walking down driveway to driveway in all kinds of weather to capture some numbers off of a meter that we could probably hardly even see the dial. I think those staffs could be much better utilized doing different things throughout their day than, you know, trying to capture those meters. And Kathy, if I miss something, please just, maybe you could give a little bit of.
You're doing very well. I taught him well.
So essentially, the new technology is a proactive approach in reading your meters. It talks to everything all at once rather than sending people out in trucks, going around, you know, getting the reads, sometimes missing them and having to go back out again.
You know, this part, what you describe, has already been discussed many times in the community. The most important thing I think is you save water. So more population and higher usage, you don't need a New York bigger pipe, you know? The same amount of water, if you save it, is even way ahead. So you can fight, you know, fight the fire and you can have a more pool or whatever you want to use. And anything, any amount of water you use, every day you can see. And you go on a vacation, the bathroom toilet has gone and, you know, the alarm will send it to you, you know? Or somebody go and shut it off right away. So these kind of things are, and then water is very expensive, I can tell you, you know? Really, really, New York State is worried, you know? The snow doesn't come, something, filtration, new building, the plant, the infrastructure is very, very old. You know, look at the millions of dollars, little thing they do it around here. 10 million people depend on here and we are, we are part of the same thing, you know?
And Councilman Patel touched on it, and there's so many different benefits, but also it's water conservation as well.
Absolutely, yeah. That's the highest number, yeah.
Absolutely what it is, yeah.
Yeah, and if I got that word on the next, I believe it's the next slide, but real quick on that one. Go back there, you see the conservation there. You gotta go back the other way. So again, Census Analytics is the dashboard that the water department sees. So they're going to see, they can also see similar things to the residents, but they have a little bit more control over the information, basically.
Right.
We could go to the next slide. Customer portal, we have not got that set up yet. So Mike's going to actually show you a demo of a nearby Middletown. He's going to show us their customer.
In Orange County?
Yeah.
Orange County, Middletown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So next steps, we broke this out, we have this broken up into two areas. We got the commercial meters and then we got the residential. So there's statistics in general that's out there about the water departments, kind of, like you say, from North America, is that 60% of the revenue comes from 10% of your meters, which typically are, is on the commercial side. So the first part of this, we're, we've been talking, what now, a couple of months on the process? How do we address that? Ultimately, the meters need to be tested in order to see, you know, how accurate they're reading, okay?
Yeah.
So if we're, if the technology's old, the accuracy kind of dies down over the years. So you could be missing revenue. So we're putting together with Kenny, helping him out, trying to figure out best way of going about that. We got, you know, deadlines, things like that, fees, penalties for people who don't follow the rules, you know, meter purchase.
And you enforce it?
You guys, that would be all through you guys.
That's what I'm trying to understand, yeah.
Yes, but we're helping with things like, you know, we bring some information from some of the other municipalities to kind of help you guys make the decisions you need.
Not losing the revenue. Water loss is subsidized by those who are, everybody, okay? Somebody using more, and that is the biggest problem. So I want, I want to see really with the help of the board, the biggest user, 10% has to be done right away, really.
That's something we're going to be talking about shortly.
I've seen some of the people, you know, the water is leaking before the meter, so they don't care, you know? I can have a picture like that, you know?
Yeah, I know, I mean, I think we've all, you know.
We have some technology that's available, which again, I'll get into. And we'd be happy to come back and show you at another time, committing to you guys, kind of what's, what's actually available out there. But we do have leak detection, prevention. We do have, you know, things like pressure that we can install into meters and things like that. So continuing on here, we got, you know, the testing is obviously how we need to determine what needs to be replaced, if it needs to be replaced at all.
The mechanical has to be done, really. You have to have electronic monitoring, so every, it's standardized, you know? You have, you have a meter, it'll tell you how many thousand gallons per, you know, and there, you know, moving parts.
Yeah.
You know, doesn't break down, you know? And if you use it more, they'll tell you, stop, you're middle of the night, you know, watering the, or filling up the pool and you decided how much money you want to spend, you know?
So I have, I have utilities that actually have large meters that they use so much at those locations that they change out the measuring chamber every single year. They have one on the shelf, ready to go, and they just swap them.
Makes sense.
They send the old one out to get the.
And that just makes sure they're paying their fair share. That's what we're talking about.
And actually, in your case, you have 3% of your meters are large meters. That accounts for 30% of your revenue from some of the information.
Say that again?
So you have 3%, of your meters are large meters and that accounts for 30% of your revenue.
But how about the lost revenue? I worry about that one. But, you know, they are using, their meter is going slowly omnibus and everybody else is paying the same rate, you know? The electronic monitoring are their fair share plus whatever the lost meter, you know? And then, you know, we can also accurately calculate what was the loss from fire and other, you know, hydrants and all that. So we can plan it in our budget that maybe there is, you know, loss.
You can meter what you guys are bringing into the system and compare it to what's actually being.
It's all about having the data to make the, to figure out what's going on, yeah.
That's what the FlexNet is, data, data, data.
And that's, that's how you make the best decisions and that's how you know what's going on. I mean, when you talk about the smart cities, I mean, there's examples all over the place. You know, people are being told that they have a water leak before they realize they have a water leak or even know they have a water leak. And it's all because of the technology. And so I think that's what we're getting to.
When you are done, I want to just say something really bad. And it was not bad, but it was created in the beginning, you know, we had a few, I think there's a supervisor here, few meters didn't work because there was a wrong washer. Hey, you know, so many people die as soon as they born, the babies too, you know? So why, we got to figure out what was wrong, why the man didn't wear on the moon at the first time? Little thing, but now we are all the way on the top of the mountain now and we are very eager.
So I'd like to address that. So there were, when this project was kicked off in 2011, there were some issues implementing this project, but in my humble opinion, it was not implemented in the right way. There were some mistakes along the way. We have learned from those mistakes and we'd like to move this project forward. It's about information. Right now, basically what we're doing is being reactive. We'd certainly like to be proactive and maybe analyze some of this data that's coming in and go from there.
It's something else I would just like to add to. You know, you have also know which meter how old, preventive maintenance, flushing and everything. You're right on click of a mouse, you know?
Right. So let's see what the, let's see what the rest of the presentation is, if you don't mind, and this way you can continue.
So yeah, just finishing up in the commercial, you know, some of the parameters of the testing, we still need to figure out letters to the, to the residents or to the, to the commercial property owners, whatever, is kind of what we're working right now. And essentially, this is also very important because it's not really much cost to you guys because we would probably work, we're going to probably work with you guys and the meters being sold through you guys so that they're, they're making sure they're not like kind of going to the black market and finding some, you know, obviously, we got to have the same technology, we got to have the same communication, things like that. So that's kind of what we started working on right now. Then the other side of it is the residential side. So we got about half done. It's taken quite a bit. We need to kind of figure out what this town wants to do. And do we want to, you know, put together a project plan with, we use third-party companies. We got a couple in the area that, that are currently working on some towns that all they do is they schedule with the residents, they change them with the.
Who's currently doing that now for the town of Yorktown? Is your staff, your staff's doing it right now?
Installation only.
Doing it in-house, is, that's my understanding. That's what we talked about when I came over, right?
Yes.
Scheduling everything, changing.
It's all being done by our staff right now and you're saying we have third-party?
We can, it's an option. So the town of New Windsor right now is in the middle of changing out their meters. They use a third-party company. We have relationships with a few, right? We got a few of them, yeah. But they, they take the reins and they schedule all the meetings with the residents or the appointments with the residents. And then they have a great software program where they take pictures of everything. They track meter serial numbers and all of that data gets handed over to you at the end so that you guys have inventory of what is out there.
And that's a digital file, so there's no manual entry or anything like that. So it, it simply goes right into.
Kathy likes that.
And that's a big help. That's a big help.
No, absolutely.
Ask Kathy, she knows everything, right?
Kathy's on.
And she will talk some of the girls and boys, right?
And what other, other than New Windsor, what other municipalities have used them?
So Westchester Joint is currently Census, but they're going FlexNet. We got York, well, you're Yorktown.
Yes, we are.
We were just, yes, sir, we were at Beacon. We were at.
Newburgh.
Newburgh.
And they're all going, they're doing Flex.
Correct.
That's the goal, yes. We did Fishkill, correct?
Fishkill, East Fishkill's in the process, Poughkeepsie.
Hempstead.
Hempstead, I mean, we got right now, New Windsor's right now is a project that's actually going on. They have about, what, 5,000, just 5,000 services. We started the project in August, equipment got ordered.
Yep, so installation started in late November and we're already up to 2,000 meters in radios installed.
So did you give it a timeline?
Sorry, give it to me again? You gave it, started in?
We started late November.
Late November, you already had 2,000 meters.
Yeah, and that's through the winter.
And how, and we've done, and our, and our number since 2011 is 4,300. So you've.
There was a very special reason that, you know, there was no resolution to do it all at the same time. And, you know, somebody moves, our new tenants, they want to come see and they replace it. So that's why, you know, it was not pushing hard enough.
Supervisor, also, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Pitskill has done the same program. Not this, not the same census meters, but a smart meter program. Everybody's, everybody's.
Transitioning over to these, to the smart meters.
We're working on these, yeah. But they're, they're coming back to the.
They're coming back, they're going back to reservations. Excuse me?
Even the town of Carmel has done it.
Town, they completed theirs?
Yes.
Okay.
Here's an article from New York State Gas and Electric. It's, they're doing electric metering. You pay it right on your smartphone, your computer device. Everything, that's just the way.
I get it, yeah. What else, what else do you have for the presentation here?
Like, yeah, the customer portal, if that's of interest to you, that we can take that data, all that data we get in and you'd be a customer facing.
And so just to, just to explain a little bit more, so basically instead of you getting, me getting the phone calls and you getting the phone calls, or me getting the phone calls and then calling you, which is what happens, they would be able to look at all their usage right on their phones?
Phones or laptops, yeah.
Or laptops or, or on the portal itself, right?
They can, we can, you know, start the page on your municipal website, create an account, go from there.
I want to be clear so that no one's mistaken, that is an additional program, an additional fee.
Okay.
It's on the record.
No, but I mean, you know, we are sending out for the bill, right, or in-house. So, you know, you can see your bill, how much it is, you know, and then you can send the check directly and you print it out, whatever you want to do.
I think it's more about having the, having the data on, at your fingertips. So when someone calls and says, why, why did I get a bill that's through the roof? And they don't realize that they're, you know, they want to see their usage. Because that's what they do. When they call, they say, well, we want to see our usage, instead of the staff trying to track down their usage and then sending it to them. They're going to be have it right on their tablet, right on their phone, right on their laptop, whatever it might be. That's, that's the concept, right?
So until the customer corridor gets built and is available to residents, that's what the Census analytic portal is also for. Using the FlexNet system, you still have that data, which can be done by the municipality until you get that up. So instead of, you know, the old way was you go to the house, you got to put equipment on the thing and press a button, pull that, go back, print it, you know, that kind of thing. This is just pull up the account, usually it's some code or you can search by address, things like that, and there it is.
Is there other hardware you need? I mean, you talked about three antennas that are in town.
There are.
So you're, you're all set.
We have complete coverage throughout town right now.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't need to come back for more antennas.
No, and so we have a propagation study that was done originally. We can provide that to you. It shows your radio coverage and what, what would be included.
Looks like, kind of like a weather map.
Yeah, I get it.
There was $2 million spent and it was, oh, $2 million for the new meter. They don't know that you can hook up everything happening in the town right on that meter antenna and see police car.
Right.
Hyver truck or, you know, anybody else, you know, it's available right now.
Kenny, what did you need?
So to date, the water district, we've invested $1.6 million into the project over the last nine years.
Are we good on time? I want to.
We're, we're running behind, but we can, we're going to push, we're going to muscle through this.
He can give.
I had, I had a quick question, just thinking about, you know, globally. Can you take this system and say between 9:00 and 9:30, we had our fire department running hoses because of a fire? Would we be able to take a global picture between 9:00 and 9:30 of our water usage to figure out what our, to figure out what our loss is during a fire comparatively to?
Anything can be measured.
So you can pull consumption from all of your water meters. If you have a specific area that you want to look at, you can group that area together and essentially make that as one meter, you know, in total, all of those up. So say you have one housing development, there was a fire there. You can group all those meters up, look at that consumption and then compare it to maybe a master meter that you have in the area. And that would give you an idea.
The other way to do it is suppose that main line, there are four, you put a four big meter, big meter, so if something goes wrong, you shut it off. Right away, you only do in everywhere else you have water.
Yeah, we actually-
And those are very important features.
Yep. We actually have technology now that the meter itself has a ball valve in it, so you can actually, from that software census analytics, go there and say, you got on, off, and what, what we refer to as trickle. Some areas in the state may get illegal to do that, so that people who have medication can have a glass of water, but you're not showering, washing your clothes.
Got it.
No, that back, back flush.
I'll get into that in a quick second, because we do have-
Yeah, let's, let's continue with the presentation.
So again, benefits to you guys, you're going very, very efficient. The way the system works is, and our recommendation is, there is some flexibility into it, but, which plays into warranties and things like that, but every hour, the meter reads. Every four hours, the radio antenna sends a signal to all the meters and say, "Hey, give me what you got." So four hours of reads gets brought up to the antenna, down to a base station, then it gets uploaded to that census analytics. So it's, I refer to it as near real time, and you can actually go and click on account and say, "Give me a read right then and there" and pull it out. So you can do on-
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but Kathy, give me a sense, how often are we reading meters? If we're going out manually to read them, how often are we reading them? He's telling me every four hours?
Once every hour.
Well, it's once every hour, but it's uploading every four?
The information, yeah, the data, but it stores it at the meter.
Two meter readers-
Yep.
For two weeks.
Yep.
The first two weeks of the month.
How many they doing?
Oh, 2,000.
2,000?
Mm-hmm.
In, in a two weeks, in a two-week span, but it's taking two weeks and two staffers versus four hour, versus this, and we get them every hour, and it's, and it's uploaded every four?
With a click of a button, you get over 4,000 meter reads, versus sending somebody out for two weeks to get meter reads, or not get meter reads. It, you know, it all depends.
Right.
When that person comes back, that's when you figure out where all your problems are, and then that's when you become reactive, right?
Correct.
Uh, the meter didn't read, there's a leak, there's some kind of other issue there, then you're estimating bills, and people are unhappy because they're not getting an actual bill, so-
And that takes six weeks from the day we get the read, the manual reads, until they're analyzed, and we go out to see if there is a problem.
So we're cutting, we're cutting six weeks down to call it 72 hours.
Yes.
And then important part of this, you know, may I say something? Important part of it, this is the meter right here, and if a leak is here, we are losing, losing the money. And it goes over here, then the owner, because his boss is middle, you know. So the, because somebody, a pipe broke inside the house, and a $5,000, oh God, right here, the meter is telling him what's wrong, you know?
So the technology also comes with alarms like, like empty pipe. So if it is leaking before the meter, and there's no water running through that, you're going to get an alarm on that dashboard, which again, you'll see what-
And on the customer portal, would the customer be notified as well?
So the customer has the ability to set up all sorts of alerts, they will get those standard alarms, they will populate in the portal if they want text or email, they can-
So it's just customizable, is what you're telling me?
Exactly, yes.
But if it's a large issue, Kenny can send right away, he say that if something is wrong, alarm comes on, right? Thank you.
What else do you have in the-
Okay, just okay, again, conservation is, you're going to measure every drop, and you're going to have-
And it's accurate.
And it's accurate.
And it's accurate.
Yes.
Got it.
With warranties to back it up. So benefits, again, what I was just saying before, data, 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 it's going to be all available to them, it's going to make yourself, your lives a lot easier, that they can go in, they can, like I said, set up their own, own alerts, and see everything from an extended period of time to, you know, a day or week.
Do you want to see the system?
But yeah, that's what we like to get to right now.
I mean, I'd love to see the system, could we do it quickly, just because we're-
Yeah, I know, you're running out of time.
We're a little behind time here, it's going to be a long night.
No, no, you know, we had a student did exactly the similar presentation, they spent a whole summer, this is second year, the four-year project. So this is really nice, you know, you are a-
No, it's great, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So this is the login right now, this is actually your system right now. When you log in, you're going to see these icons, which allow you to go to different areas, so I'll turn over my-
Yeah, so this is the landing, this is the landing page here. I'm not going to go through all these applications.
This is what our staff sees right now?
This is the Water Department facing portal, yes.
Got it. You need, you need a mouse. There you go.
Perfect. So if you ever want to get a quick snapshot of your system, you click on Meter Insight, and that'll show you exactly what's going on, how many meters are active and reporting in, how many unknown radios you have in there. 41 orphan meters, those are accounts that, you know, they're, they're metering radios that are reporting in with no actual account information, so no, no customer name, no account number, and all that means is it's not being sent over from billing. So you know you have to fix that information within billing. Minimum and maximum thresholds-
You can do it tomorrow, you don't have to do it tonight.
That's for Cliff to do.
That's Cliff's job. I'm looking over his shoulder.
Your, your maximum threshold, that's usually one and a half times the average usage for that account, so you have 409 people that are, that are over using, right?
Right now.
That could be your after the meter.
That's pretty, yeah.
If you want-
Can you track who those 409 are?
Yep. So, so you can, you can actually drill down, and you can see each individual account. You can go in, and you can see the account information up top, as well as usage in either a tabular view or a graph. You can go down hour by hour, and you can see what was consumed during that period of time.
And that's the part that we always have to pull, right?
Yes.
So, exactly.
Again, you guys, it's, you have it, it's up, this, this part's up.
And you can also high and low limit install in the software, so they'll, you know, give you alarms right away.
So, so Cliff gets these reports every morning, or not every morning, every Monday morning, he gets a report, and then he starts going through to see where the biggest problems are, and then starts from there, right? Hands it all, all over to the utility, or to Kathy here, and then they go out and they solve those problems. At a quick snapshot, just to see your alarms currently, you have 59 users that have leaks. Of those 59, some of them have reported multiple times.
They've report, self-reported, or they've-
Uh, so the, the system just keeps sending that alarm.
Okay.
So you can adjust your timeframe, you can look at the hour-by-hour graph, and now you can see when that leak occurred. You can use this as ammunition if the customer comes back to you and is complaining about the bill. You can download this in PDF, you can send it via email, you can send it, you know-
No, it just improves customer service, which, which we're, which our, our word partner does a great job with, but it just makes it a lot easier and a lot, I think, much more manageable to provide the data to our customers, correct?
Absolutely.
So you have all these different tabs, like if you have somebody that calls in frequently with concerns about their bill, you can set up a watch-me alert, so you can go in and you can set a notification to someone in the utility, in, in case there are any issues on that particular account.
Okay.
If, if you have Customer Portal, I'll show you real quick what that would look like to your residents. So at the, on the utility side, you would see this green button saying Customer Portal. All that means is, you know they have an account set up.
Right.
So if someone in particular calls in and they're complaining, you can view exactly what they see on their end, and it would look like this.
This is Middle, Middletown, right?
Yep. So this is the city of Middletown. So you would see what their usage was previously, what it currently is, what it was last year. You can send notifications through this portal, so if they have an account, and you're going to be closed for a particular day, you can send out a note, notification to all those that have this service. They can set up email and text alerts from here, so if they're going out of town, and they want to know if anybody has been in the house, they can set up an alert for that. If you have landlords that have income property, they can have multiple locations listed out here, and they can, and they can search through and, and view if there are any leaks or anything like that.
That's great. Especially with our landlords, right?
So you know, the gallon per use, and then the price goes up, oh, why my price has gone up, you know, a little bit-
We can show them.
Yeah.
We can show them. Now what's, so what's, so I guess, you know, bottom line is, what's the bottom line, right? So if we were to, if we were to meter all of our remaining houses, and if we were to meter all of our remaining houses, which is 43-
They pay immediately.
I'm sorry, which is 50, roughly 5,400.
Yeah, a little over that, yep.
Little over 5,400, as well as the, what do we say, the 295 commercial?
Yep.
Roughly. So what would, what, what is going to cost to implement this on full scale?
250 plus label or something?
So, we actually, Kathy and myself looked at this today. We based it on 5,500 residential meters-
Okay.
Because that's what the Water District would be responsible for. So it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood to complete this project, probably, what did we say, it was about $2.5 million?
Yes.
Okay.
If you were to opt to do a turnkey solution and have us finish that out for you in, say, a year's time, you would certainly get economies of scale and reduce those costs.
So does that 2.5 include the customer portal?
Uh, it, it does not, I never-
No, no.
Oh, it's 2.5 million plus customer portal, right? And then is that third-party purveyor doing the installations?
Yes.
So if we didn't do third-party and we kept it in-house, what's the cost?
So that would be, I, we figured it out to be about $125 per meter install.
So it is cheaper in house, or don't all as one shot? You know, third-party.
So a, a typical residential meter and the, the radio set, currently, right now, we're paying $350. And we assume that it would be about 125 to install each meter, and that's how we got to the, to the 2.6 million dollars.
So if somebody complained, then why I do, why I need a new meter, tell them how much water you save. And then, then you will get your return on investment very quickly.
Right. So, and, and I just want to touch on that. So we, we hear about unaccounted water. What it really is, let's call it what it is, it's called non-revenue water, right? It's water we're buying that the district, that the ratepayers are subsidizing, the people that the meters are not working, right? So for 2019, our non-revenue water was 17.8%. That's based with water main breaks, firefighting, illegal hookups, inaccurate meters, there's a lot of things that make up that number, and that 17.8% cost the Water District $627,000.
So that's, how many meters you can buy, okay?
So, and I'm not, I don't want to mislead anybody to say that our water, non-revenue water would be 0% because that's not, that's unheard of.
Right, it's never going to happen.
Right? But it will certainly be less than 17.8%, okay?
So, I have, I actually have two questions.
Go ahead, you know.
So the first, and I'll thank Mr. Kopstein for this one, have you done any work with any, any conservation grants for water conservation?
What a qualify for the New York Water Grant?
So I have not done any work with them in particular. A lot of that stuff kind of goes through the engineers that develop these projects, that work with the town, and they usually go out to, to find funding, whether it's through EPA or whomever.
If I could just touch on that, so if, if, if you remember back not too long ago, the board authorized me to retain an engineering company that specializes in water field for special projects throughout the district. When we were working with them a little bit last year, there was a grant that was available, and it was going, I forget exactly who it was from, but it was through Water Conservation.
Okay.
And that's how they were able to-
Well, hopefully we can, we're working towards a solution in that aspect as well.
Yeah, anybody can, you know.
Well, listen, I, I do appreciate it.
I have one more question, which I think is pretty current.
We are running very behind.
Kenny, have we been talking to the contractors in town, letting them know that when they're doing new construction, that this is a preferred meter at this time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So any contractor that's any new building, any new structure, they have to come through our office. Kathy talks with them and tells them exactly what meter they need, and-
Great.
They're all smart meters.
Good, good. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Give me your email address and I'll show you the project, what we did in town.
Since you're creating a customer portal, would you be able to see how much your bill is on there, and would you be able to maybe go to a third party for bill paying?
So, so in terms of seeing your bill, I, I think, I haven't seen it done, but I believe we can pull that information. It would be additional information we would have to pull from billing. We can include a link on that page for you, so if you have a third party that they can do online bill paying, they can just click on that link, go in and pay their bill.
Yeah, great. Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Kenny, you're not going anywhere, you're still here, and, and, you're both still here. So we're talking, I know we're very late, Commercial Water Meter.
I'm going to try to save us some time right now.
Save us, save us some time here, Kenny boy.
So when I was in talking with the board about the commercial water meters-
Again, gentlemen, thank you.
The one thing that needed to be changed was, or added to the town code was some, some language that we needed to, to change. I've worked with our town attorney, Mr. Rodriguez, he's been great more than helpful. I think we've nailed down everything that we needed to put into the code, and I believe that we're going to be pushing it forward. I'll let you talk to that.
Mr. Rodriguez, what do you have for us?
That's correct. We have a resolution tonight to authorize a clerk to advertise for a public hearing, which we'll be introducing later.
Okay, do we, do we have the language?
Yeah, I have it for you.
Okay. Well, we, are you going to present it to us?
Yeah, sure. Do you want it now, or I thought we were going to do it at the end?
No, well, I don't, no, I don't think we're doing that one at the end, for the commercial water, because we need seven days.
No, no, that's to vote on, to have the public hearing for the local law.
Well, it's the first I'm seeing the language, so I'd rather wait for seven days to, to digest it.
No, no, what I'm talking about is the resolution to authorize the clerk to sit it down for a public hearing, for the consideration of the local law, not-
So if you send us the law, we can do that on Tuesday, if you send it to the board now.
Right, that's what, yeah, thank you, thank you. So, can you just tell us what it is?
The, what?
What is the proposal for the Commercial Water Meter?
There are going to be changes to it to authorize fines for non-compliance with the testing requirements.
Okay. Do you have, do you have specifics as to enforcement?
Yeah. The, the fines are going to be up to 3, no greater than $350 in any calendar year, and the enforcement will be taken in the normal course, you know, by the town attorney, or any other code enforcement officers that the board authorizes.
And the new meter also including this one, do your new commercial building or something?
This is for the testing of the meters.
This is all, it's all commercial building.
All the commercials, uh, meters are supposed to be tested semi, uh, every-
And can I just add this to, why our reps were here for the meter. It's my understanding that if your water meter is pre-2000, the parts will not be available. So if, if you have an inch and a half water meter, to replace that water meter is $1,300. I would strongly suggest to the, to the property owners to, if it's, if it's pre-2000, just don't take your money and invest it in a meter test, because it's probably not going to pass, and you're not going to be able to get parts for it.
We're encouraging anyone with a pre-2000 water meter to get it replaced.
Absolutely.
That's what we're asking.
Right.
Okay. And we can, we can make that announcement again. Perfect. All right. And then I believe we do have a, were we doing a presentation quickly? We weren't, we weren't doing a presentation based on customer service tonight?
No, that was through the, the customer portal.
No, okay.
I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
I thought we were presenting with a presentation for customer service?
Oh, I, I, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Unless, unless you forgot something that I-
Yes, no.
No?
I had, I thought it was next week, but-
You want to do it next week?
No, let's do it right now.
Right now?
Right now.
Okay. So we, we got several compliments on some amazing customer service by one of our staff members who happens to be here. And listen, we're in, we're in, we work for the public, and it's not always easy sometimes, but we do some great work, we have some great staff, and I like to recognize our staff and, when they get compliments. And so we have a special certificate of achievement for Kathy-
Thank you.
For some great work. We had some, I think we had three different constituents reach out to either myself directly, the board, or, or Kenny, recognizing some of the amazing customer service that you provided them with some of their billing, and-
And that, just in a short while, we've had a lot more than three over the years.
That's just been the last month.
Yeah. And, and I was just going to add to that, Kathleen does a heck of a job. Everybody in the Water District does a heck of a job, but Kathleen, she, she really shines, she knows her business, and she is definitely looking out for the residents. She goes out of her way above and beyond to help any homeowner with a water bill or a water leak. She's constantly being recognized. I always get letters, phone calls, coming into our office, and it makes, it makes me proud to, to, to receive those kinds of calls and emails, so-
Well, thank you.
Great job.
We just want to present you with this certi, why, Kenny, why don't you give it to her? And we just want to say thank you, congratulations.
Hold it, I gotta take a picture, Kenny. I gotta take a picture, and I want to say, I want to say something. Every year, I get together, every year I came over there with the student, really you have spent your own time and preparing your future tax bill.
Could I just say one thing?
Wait, you can say two.
I work with the most fantastic department in the whole town, probably in the whole state. We have wonderful employees there. James Waterhouse, Paul Basillo, Maria, who works in the office, Jimmy, who keeps our trucks going.
It's a great crew.
A wonderful water family.
Well, we like to recognize good work.
As well.
We like to recognize good work and like I said, you had quite a few compliments given to you from a number of constituents. So we're very, very happy and proud to present you with.
And thank you to them.
Absolutely.
And sitting on the town board, we know you usually hear the complaints, not the compliments. So the fact that we get so many compliments shows how above and beyond you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, thank you.
Next up, VFW. Mr. Sheridan, welcome to command.
We wanted that military. Hurry up and wait for you.
Yes. So we are here talking about, I spoke with Alex, the commander over the VFW. They are asking to use the town hall's commuter lot.
Correct.
Directly outside here for an upcoming car show.
Correct.
Mr. Sheridan.
June 14th, Sunday, a car show which we will be the sponsors of. It's a reputable auto club that we've worked with in the past. They want to have the use of the parking lot to put on their car show. We'll be the sponsors and the recipients of funds raised.
Mr. Rodriguez, any issues on your end?
No.
Any issues from the board?
June, right, June is.
June 14th.
14th is a Sunday.
And just to make sure, there's no permitting required from your office on this? Great.
I'd like to enter into a license agreement, but that's a simple process. But there's no overriding concerns about the usage of it.
Okay.
And Mike, what times will that be held from?
I don't have the details in front of me. I thought Alex had already provided. He was supposed to be here tonight.
Yes, I know. He is, he's working. He's working, so, okay.
Any ideas, like an all-day type thing?
I would imagine it's most, yeah, it's an all-day.
All right, I'll leave it, I'll just leave it as a.
Catch them more hours into the afternoon.
Yeah, we'll get more details as the event develops, but they did come to ask. And I did speak with Chief Noble. I know Chief Noble's supportive of this specifically because he's trying to move these events out of the road and into parking lots. And so if there's no objections from the board or anyone from legal, then we can take this up at the next meeting and formally pass a resolution.
And we specifically don't propose to close down Veterans Road for car shows.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
And I also want to thank you for serving on our Veterans Committee.
Yes.
And thank you for serving our country.
And of course, our country.
My pleasure.
And are you going to bring any helicopter fly or something, you know?
Just show off a little bit. Mr. Sheridan, anything more you need from the board?
No.
Then we will, we will formally consent at the next town board meeting.
Yep. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck, Mike. Thanks.
Next, we have with us.
Jim Marterano.
I also want to invite members of the Parks and Rec Commission who I see in the audience, if they'd like to join the board. We have Joe Falcone, Pat Kaminski.
I got more pictures than you.
Your mouth Talbert. I would shake hands, but we're practicing good hygiene today, so please, I'm not trying to be rude. So I know we were originally going to have Barry, but is Barry planning on attending today or?
I gotta come outside, you okay?
Okay.
Everybody else, family?
So briefly, you know, the, watch that blue line. Careful now. I had met with Jim and Barry quite a few times. And I thought it would be very important and informative and helpful for them to present a status report because our Parks and Rec staff continue to do a fantastic job and to show the public some of the upgrades that they've accomplished over the last few weeks here in 2020 and talk about some of the projects that you're going to be tackling over the next. Okay, thanks. Let's call it Q2.
Yes. Matt, thanks for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I just have a remarkable staff in our Parks and Rec department. And without them, you know, none of this stuff would be possible. So if you pull out your packets, you know, from top to bottom. Railroad Park, along with the job, the great job that's being done by John Taggert on the building there. The benches, tables, and we all, we fixed. And we also replaced this slide in the playground. The slide is not pictured, so.
And that's because I did have a resident reach out to us about up, inquiring whether there was an upgrade in that playground. So what did you do for this slide?
We replaced the slide feature. So it's a brand-new slide in that playground.
Okay.
Were the benches and tables always on those slabs or no?
Were they always on the, yes, this is replaced. And Sparkle Lake, we have a brand-new bench here that overlooks the water. It's a gorgeous place to kind of just reflect. It's right outside our office. So it's gorgeous. It's really a sight to see. We've been doing, thanks to some residents that saw, that noticed some fence repair over at Walden Woods and York Hill Park. And really.
Across the street from where I live.
You know, we have so, so many pocket parks in this town, you know, we really count on our residents to let us know, you know, if they see something down or things.
Jim, if there's a resident who wants to report something about a pocket park, what's the best way for them to get in touch with you?
They can email me directly at jmarterano@yorktownny.org.
Great.
Something that I love seeing is the Sparkle Lake Service Building. We did a complete facelift. We repainted the whole building, including the bathrooms.
And that's all internal to paint?
Correct.
Okay.
All this work is internal.
No, I meant it's all inside the building. You didn't paint the outside of the building.
Yeah, something I want to do.
And it was all done by the.
But it is an important point, Matt, that all this work is internally done.
And that's why I wanted to.
None of this work is contracted out. It's not at any extra expense to taxpayer.
And that's exactly what I wanted to highlight.
Do you rent out once in a while?
Yes.
This place, you should make an announcement like this when time permits, when there's slot available, anybody can use it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're currently remulching a few of the playgrounds, Chelsea Park being this one here. Definitely an important thing to do, something that.
Chelsea Park off Gomer Street?
Yep, it's something that needs to be done, you know, once every few years. So we'll keep cycling through our playgrounds to remulch them continuously. The final product is here.
Yep, looks fantastic.
So Jim, what are you doing? You're taking out all the old moats?
Correct, replacing what's new. So we have a few baseball projects going on right now, obviously to the season. So we've redone Shroboke Baseball Field. We recut, reclayed and put up a new scoreboard.
Over at Shroboke.
Over at Shroboke.
There's a scoreboard. And is that used exclusively by SOAC?
None of our parks are used specifically exclusively, but they use it most.
Yeah, right, okay. So they use it, they're the most frequent tenant.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear with that.
Understood, of course.
So Legacy Field had a lot of work to do as well as Woodlands. So we've been recutting those fields as well and re-claying them also. So those are pictured here as well.
And I know that we had our Parks and Rec Commission meeting last week. And for the brief time that I was there, I did hear a lot of compliments coming from our sports clubs who are very pleased with the work that's being done in preparation for the upcoming season.
Absolutely, you know, to have this game plan at the beginning of the year and then being able to have the weather to implement it has been great. And that couldn't have been done without the constant communication from our sports clubs as well. So thank you to them. 202 also re-clayed all three with red clay, as you can see, it's photo. There's a few projects I wanted to highlight that were not photod here. The installation of our security cameras has been finished. And those cameras are at Granite Knolls, Legacy Field, Junior Memorial Pool and Shroboke Park and Slaven Aquatics Facility. So those cameras are in. They've already come in handy. PD does have access to them. So something that we're very fortunate that the commission took a lead on and helped present to the town board so we could get that passed. So kudos to the commissioners here. Thank you for all your support.
That's great.
Where do you store the information? Is it the police department or do you have a server or place?
I don't think you want to say where the server is stored.
Okay, well, you should know it though, I mean, you know.
Oh, you want security-sensitive information to stay secure.
Yeah, okay, no, that's what I mean. It's the police department and.
It is to say the police department does have access to it and they have utilized it.
No, no, that's good, yeah. Because if I don't know and somebody asks me, you know, I will tell police department it has the information.
Right, and that actually, and it helps because I know that there was also the incident over at Slaven, was it a year ago?
Yes, correct.
More than a year ago.
That was a catalyst, that was a catalyst of this project.
Right, and so now that we have the security camera, should something like that happen, careful, don't break it.
This is really good.
Now that we have the security camera, should someone do something at one of our parks, hopefully, we're going to be able to provide the police enough evidence to capture that individual.
So I thank my staff, I thank the commission, but now I have to thank the town board. Thank you for the ability to have some fleet replacement. I know you guys know that over the last year in 2019, we lost seven vehicles in the Parks Department. So you all have approved two trucks already with the third one that you just approved via that mini bid. So you kind of, we're almost halfway there of replacing all the vehicles we lost. That's the last vehicle I tend on purchasing, obviously, this year. But we certainly have a few vehicles we need to replace still. But that's something that we'll discuss, you know, in 2021.
Great.
But thank you for that opportunity. We've also replaced chairs at the senior center. So I know they're very happy about that, about 100 chairs that we purchased for our seniors. A lot of those chairs, thanks once again to our community, reaching out to me, showing me how corroded those chairs were, how ripped they were, we were able to, you know, save some money.
That was the last year budget though, right? 2019?
Yes, that was the last budget.
Allocated in last year's budget.
It was allocated in last year's budget, but it was delivered in this year, 2020.
That's really good, good chairs.
Yep, it's great for our seniors.
Yes.
And then, of course, the purchase this first quarter, purchasing the online software. Big thing that we passed and we're looking forward to implementing it. All right, we're going to switch over to the next packet. This is going into quarter two of what we have planned as a department. I'm just going to show you the first picture first and then I'll put it down. And then since it's things that are going to happen, I don't have a lot of pictures for you.
Right.
In regards to that.
I think we understand that.
Yep. So the first project, probably the biggest project we just started is the Junior Lake Memorial Pool Mason Project. If you see in this picture, this is before the job started. You could see, we tried to fix some of the cement issues we've had here where there's a dropping of the cement due to, I guess, how they put it in originally, the settling. And thank you, thank you, Joe. So it was clearly a safety hazard that our constituents constantly saw and pointed out. So we're in the process of doing that. I have to thank the highway superintendent for helping us in the beginning of this project. And I also have to thank building maintenance Al and Margaret for helping us in the future towards the end of this project.
And Chris.
Chris Moran.
Chris.
Chris Moran, I can't forget him either. So going off the pictures here, we're looking to clean and paint both pools once this is done. We're replacing the sand filters at Slaven. We're cleaning and repairing all chlorine pumps as well, getting those ready for this busy season. We, I forgot to mention in the first quarter, we just hired a laborer. So we'll announce that probably next Tuesday. But going into the second quarter, we have, we lost a assistant superintendent of Parks and Recreation. We're looking to replace that with two lower-level rec positions. So that will be coming up in the second quarter. Very important with this spring and summer coming up, so.
We talked about that.
It's pending, pending some county approval. We're measuring all the lines of all the ball fields. And this is something that, once we measure them and line them, we'll have to update weekly. So that also has to, goes into the schedule of our trimming. Our department trims over 175 acres of space. So, you know, we'll be very busy come spring and summer with our trim crew. This job will also include, we talked about something I have a goal for the second quarter, is Ivy Knolls. We talked to the police and talked about visibility up there. We're not trying to brush back too much of the bushes there. But the police believe that five yards, just brush back on spruce, could give them the visibility they need to drive by.
I know in the past, we've had some issues at that, at that specific playground. And I, you know, had some residents reach out asking if there was going to be anything done to improve visibility.
Yep.
So it's great to hear that you guys are willing.
That's the goal in the short term, and hopefully that has some effect.
Great.
So we have these beautiful parks, as you can see in those pictures. But what I've come to notice is some of the signs aren't so beautiful. So I'm really pushing the issue on replacing some of the signage at each one of our parks. Granite Knolls doesn't even have a sign yet. So we've constructed that and we'll be putting that up in the second quarter, as well as replacing signs at Hunter Brook and a few others that I'll.
You're going to tackle, I don't know, and I know Barry's not here to answer, but are we going to tackle the Yorktown Event Sign that was over on the corner here in Underhill Ave?
We will certainly have to because it's on the schedule. So that's definitely going to be on our radar as well. Thanks for bringing that up.
I know Barry Lieben is going to be very happy when he starts advertising for Sound of Music.
Yes. And talking about signs that we had to put back up. Granite Knolls, we had an incident where a car unfortunately ran into our kiosk. So we put that up and I had it pictured, but I took it out because we had to refix it. So that will be back up in the second quarter as well. We also are fixing some workout equipment over at Veterans Field in the second quarter. So that's been ordered. It's a matter of receiving it and putting it in. We also purchased, thanks to our sports clubs again, in partnership with them, we all paid a third for the mounds at Woodlands and Legacy. So brand-new mounds being placed in those two fields. So we really want those two fields to shine after not being, not being used over the past year and a half.
Great. Q2 project is installing the new mounds.
Correct. And going back to these photos, we're redoing the tables over at Downing Park. And then I've had different residents of children reach out to me with some concerns of safety at our playgrounds. And I actually had one literally today of a grandparent that her poor grandchild got his arm stuck in this small portion at Downing Park. You know, being a senior, it was quite alarming for her. It was a little scary.
This part here?
Yeah, underneath, no, underneath. So he slid his arm underneath, he's got his arm stuck and he was too short to, yeah, to put his feet down and support himself. Luckily grandma was there. She helped him.
Right.
Get support and got him off. He was fine. But, you know, it was alarming to her and I'm happy that she brought it to my attention. And we're going to go forward in finding a remedy to that issue.
Okay.
But, you know, it came to my attention coming on this job that we have not had any kind of playground safety inspection over the past, I think, four or five years. And I think it's time to do that. And certainly I will be putting it on my budget for 2021, but I think that it may be a higher priority than that. Unfortunately, it's not in my budget. So, you know, at some point, I would love to come before the town board and ask you guys for the money to do a project such as this.
How often are they supposed to be inspected?
I believe once every couple of years.
Couple.
I think two, couples two. I would love to get.
So every other year, they're supposed to be inspected?
Correct.
I think, you know, they should inspect every year.
I agree.
At the beginning of the season, you know.
I think at the very least, I would love to do it now, put it in my budget and put them on a schedule, on an annual schedule where we're doing, where we're alternating the different parks. So we have about 15 satellite parks here that should be, you know, on a rotation for, for being maintained and retaining them, but for taking a look at their safety.
And so what, can you just give me, explain to me more, so when they do a safety assessment, what are they, are they going through with equipment to stuff like this and finding?
Correct.
And do they fix it or are they just giving you a report back saying, now you got to go fix it?
Unfortunately, the latter. So you would then have to fix whatever.
Are these people capable of fixing any issues or?
Correct. They should be able to fix, help us fix it or at least point us in the right direction. And also, what I also like to do in a more long-term look at this is we can get one of our own parks guys certified in playground safety.
Absolutely.
So.
And they offer, I'm sure, I'm guessing they offer certification in that?
Not them specifically, but other, there's other classes they could take, so.
But they can be certified as a playground inspector so that this way we're not outsourcing this in the future.
Correct. Thank you. That's my long-term play. So.
How long-term?
I mean, you have to get certification, so we're looking.
Do we know what the process is to get certified?
I have to do more of your research on that. I just know you can do it, yeah.
But you know, if there is a loose screw or not, you know, missing screw.
I would certainly have to find a staff member that'd be willing to take the classes. And then, then we'd have to essentially pay for them, which I don't have a budget for. So really, it's a 2021 budget item that I will put on the table as far as classes for my staff. That's something I would definitely like to look at.
Right.
Come budget time. And not only the specific class, but other classes as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's figure it out.
And then, so that's all I had as far as quarter one and quarter two.
Were these the, did we use Playground Medic the last time we did inspection?
Yes.
And we have what, and do we have the result of their last inspection?
I believe so, yes. I have to pull it up.
Did we remedy the?
Yeah, everything was up to date as of 2015.
Okay, so we didn't have to remedy anything in the, they didn't, they didn't find any faults that we had to go?
Not to my knowledge. I've not seen that report since I've been.
I just want to make sure that we remedied anything that was highlighted in.
If Barry was here, that'd be a great Barry question.
Right, I know, I understand. I hope he's feeling better.
Yep. So that's all I had for quarter one and quarter two. I did want to, since I'm here, give you an update on the Valley Fields Golf Course.
Okay.
This is also involved in quarter one and quarter two. So in quarter one, we did have the site violation from the DEC Wetlands. We did everything that he wanted. He noticed some things that were an issue with stormwater. The stormwater portion of DEC Region 3 came in. She noticed some things that she didn't, she didn't like. I've pictured them here. We had some silt fencing that was down in two spots. And she also mentioned that there was some erosion control issues as well in picture three. We've since remedied those problems.
Right, these are the first, this is the first thing that we.
Well, this is actually the second, this is a stormwater issue, so the second violation. We passed the first one. And we.
This was handled.
Yeah, this is since handled, yeah, this is good. And I'm just showing you that it was handled today and I took these, these are photos from today and I've emailed.
When you say it was handled though, I just want to make clear, it was handled by RC Recreation, not by the town of Yorktown. Recreation, not by the Town of Yorktown.
That is correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
But it's, it says in our agreement that I need to oversee some of that stuff, so.
I understand. You've overseen way too much, in my opinion.
So, once again, fixed again here, and then some of, the erosion control was done also here. So, you know, they're certainly working good faith with the DEC, as well as us as a town. There's still more to do. I think there's a question of what's the definition of general maintenance? And that's something that we're discussing with the DEC currently. You know, we think we're under an acre of disturbance. They think we are over that acre of disturbance, and if we are, we'll have to get a Speedy's permit and get an NOI done, which would, you know, which would include a SWIP, and they'd have to hire an engineer. So that's kind of where the project is at the, at that point. On the other hand, we've met with the planning department, and they've done their parking plan, and they're working with the planning department on a seating chart as well inside.
And they were in front of the planning board last night, correct?
Correct.
They were. The applicant did not bring the proper seating chart, so he is coming back at the next meeting, but there's some.
Here's some average, Joe.
Joe, let me ask you this one.
There is some, there is some concern over the, the total parking needed for the course and, plus the tables and the restaurant and the seats.
But you have the parking lot there as well.
Right, so there's talk about using the auxiliary, auxiliary parking in the parking ride.
Which, I think, did they use that in the past?
They did.
I remember parking there in the past, growing up as a kid and going to play over there.
Right, and, and I had also recommended that, you know, as part of good management, that they probably set up an area there for their employees to park, so they keep the.
Out of there.
Right, keep the spots.
Jim, you want anything to hear from our planning director?
Not at the moment.
All right, okay, because I see the.
Well, no, they were in front of the planning board, I just gave you the report because he was at the meeting last night, so he emailed us the notes. He also, thank you for emailing us the notes, but he took notes and emailed to all the town board members as well last night.
Yesterday I saw the, the whole thing, okay?
I was on the phone with DEC today about this as well, like you and I had discussed. They were very complimentary of our staff, which was great to hear. They know that we're working diligently on this, and, and so I think that the feeling I got was, I don't want to jinx it, but the feeling I got was they felt like it was going to be resolved. Let's hope. But that, it was a very positive conversation, but most, I do want to emphasize, they were very complimentary to our staff, which is great to hear.
And something we need to understand, that RC Recreation Development isn't a Fortune 500 company. You know, there, there's a few guys working on things, so things aren't going to move as fast as a CVS project, you know?
Right, right, right.
And we need to understand that, you know, I think that's important to understand, that, you know, hopefully it won't be, it'll be faster than snail's pace, but, you know, that's kind of on me to make sure that they are, you know, moving along steadily.
And you have, and, and the minute that this fell on our plate, you know, I think, again, all of our departments, especially you, and especially Joe, and members of the commission, have been incredible on this project, getting it across the finish line is the goal. Do we know when Arnold Palmer Foundation is expected to?
I, I'm, don't quote me on this, but I'm not sure if that has been now rescheduled because of the violation. Everything kind of has been halted until we have this all figured out.
Right, okay.
I think the, the future plan is, there is the first hole, which is not in the DEC Wetlands at all. We would love to do a driving range there.
Driving range there, right.
And then, and then wait until that, all the DEC stuff is settled, and they can really start doing that. You'd have to rest it anyway, so we're probably looking at maybe rescheduling in fall, but don't quote me on that, that'd be up to RC Recreation.
Okay.
To, to schedule that. And, you know, they're, they're a third-party vendor.
You've done everything you can. You really have. I really, really want to, again, thank you for your leadership on this, as well as all of our department heads, you know, we got John in the back, you know, Mike Quinn downstairs, and, and John Landy. Again, we came together very quickly on this, and we've been very aggressive in, in trying to get this organized and moving in, in the direction that we're in. So hopefully we can just settle this issue with DEC, and we can get over the hump, and hopefully we'll be teeing off on, on T1 soon. That's the goal.
Let me just say something to you guys, okay? This is a wonderful, why don't you show it to everybody else how great it is?
Because he was too busy today, that's why. He was too busy running around town.
You saved a couple of trees.
I did apologize, Matt.
No, it's okay. It's all right, if you, if, yeah, it's okay, but he's going to come back, and this is something I talked to him and Barry about, is having him come back at the end of every quarter, let's see what, and this way they can report back to the town. They're one of the most visible departments in our town, and I think it's important for people to see, you know, the hard work that they're putting in. We've got a great staff, they're doing a lot of great work, and some, it's easy to complain, but it's important for them to see what we've actually done. And so a lot of work's been going into, into the upkeep, a lot of maintenance. We've got an exciting season coming up here in Yorktown, which, you know, you're leading the way on. And with the, with the help of the commission and the rest of the town hall and town government, I think, I think we're, we're setting ourselves up for, for a successful year. So I really want to thank everybody. Councilman Lachman, you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted, for, for everyone on the commission, I know one of the things that came up at the last meeting was the Hunter Brook Soccer Field and the, the need for topsoil. So there are two projects going, that are going to be going on, that were before planning yesterday, where they're dredging the waterways, and that actually leaves a pretty good soil if it tests out positive. One is at Old Logging Road, which is pretty close to get it over to Hunter Brook, and then the other one, the other one is T-Town. And both of them will be looking to get rid of that product, so if it tests out positive, I, I already have the T-Town person's number for you on a card, Jim, I'll, I'll try to get you that tomorrow.
That's great, thank you.
And then, you know, perhaps we could make Al French a happy man.
The only thing you got to worry about with dredge spoils is the amount of organics that are in there. That's the issue that we're having there now, that's why we're having, it's not draining properly. The fill that we have, because I was there when we, sorry, I was there, I acted as the superintendent for, before him, for the month to actually get the fill that we got in there and place it. So that did have a lot of organics and a lot of rock, so they're going to have to dry it out. You can't just drive dredge spoils in the back of the truck.
Right, well, one of them in particular is where they fill the, the drainage bag, so it's a big bag, and it drains, the water drains out.
Yeah, the sediment bags.
Yeah, let that sit as long as you need. And that's, that's the T-Town, which I think is a bigger, oh no, I'm sorry, that's, that's Old Logging.
So they're going to suction dredge it?
Right.
Okay.
Right, so.
The last thing I had for you before you left, I think you and I talked about this, shrub oak tennis courts. Can we get some signage on there about bikes on the tennis courts? We've got beautiful new courts up there. I was over there over the weekend, last two weekends, and you got kids, and it's not their fault, but if you're going to put bikes on the courts, you're, you're just going to deteriorate pretty quickly. And I don't, also don't think it's safe. So if we can put some signage up there, because I don't want the, we got, like I said, we spent a lot of money on those tennis courts, hate to see them deteriorate quickly.
If you're doing the signs of bikes, you might as well do rollerblades.
Yeah, we'll have to put all the rules forward for both tennis court and pickleball courts, so it's definitely something that's on my radar.
I didn't see any signage up there, I don't know, I looked, I didn't see any, but if we could include that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
Any chance you want to jump the 10:15 one, since we're all up here?
Yeah.
Well, we got Kim, who's been waiting quite some time, unfortunately. Let me give, we'll be quick, I promise. Kim.
Thank you, guys, thanks a lot.
Kim, thanks for being so patient. And where's, where's those bags? So we got, we got some bags that we can give to Kim, to hand out at Refugees and Recycling, courtesy of.
Where'd you get those?
Spirelli Electric.
Oh, nice, well, ours are going to look, well, I wouldn't say better, but.
You take those and?
I did one as his business card.
That's, that's great.
Take that as my card.
Super, 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 super.
Do you want one?
You can keep it.
No, no, I have this one.
More?
One more.
There you go.
We'll take all we can get.
So, so what's going on? So we're talking, reduce it, we got some great.
Yeah, first, yeah, first I'd like to just say thank you to the town board for adopting the resolution last week for the purchase of the new Packer truck for Refugees and Recycling. Last time I ordered a Packer was in 2012.
Oh, that long?
So that's the newest one we have, so I've been a little anxious, and I placed the order today. Production should take about seven to eight months. Certainly not as dramatic as the IBM Solar Carpet Project, but even small steps to reduce our carbon footprint are necessary, since we, the Town of Yorktown, this organization, we should be a leader in sustainability for our community.
Couldn't agree more.
So that's, that's just a couple of things I wanted to talk about today, real fast, so you'll be able to catch up.
That's okay. You had, we talked about some great ideas, so I'm happy for you to have them come to the board.
First thing is, I'd like to recommend that it become town policy, and this is where you guys are going to come in, that only paper bag, paper cups should be purchased for the use of the five-gallon water coolers located throughout the town-owned buildings. I believe we have about 15 water coolers. Disposable plastic cups, these obnoxious things.
Don't do that, please.
They don't come out one at a time, they come out half a dozen at a time.
They don't fit for starters. They may cost less to purchase than paper cups, but the expense of manufacturing plastic from petroleum and then incinerating as trash is an environmental nightmare, especially when one considers that the cup is used only once.
Right.
For the past few years, the Refugees and Recycling Department, as well as the Central Garage, have been purchasing paper cups for our, our water coolers. Nevertheless, the other departments in town have been using those. They won't touch it.
Yeah.
Maybe a small gesture, but in recognition of Earth Day, the Refugees and Recycling Department would like to purchase two cases, it would be 10,000 for that.
10,000 paper cups?
Yeah, four-ounce paper cups, the Solo Bear Eco Forward Cone Cups, and provide 600 paper cups, we can give three sleeves to each of the 15 water coolers, and then moving forward, the replacement cups, it should be purchased by the individual departments, using the New York State contract available through Staples.
You don't know, you know, just out of curiosity, do you know the price differential?
Um, these are much less expensive to purchase, but for us to purchase 10,000 four-ounce paper cups, it's going to cost our department $169. I think we can handle that.
I think we can handle that.
All right, so.
So can I, can I suggest you something?
Yes.
How do you reuse, you know, you can use as a planter, you know, seed, seed starter?
Yeah, but it's pretty.
Not this one, this one, paper one.
Yes, oh, it's the paper one, yeah, 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 yeah.
Ask the expert over here, you know?
Right.
Okay.
So that's one thing I would like to.
Great, I think it's a great idea.
You know, I don't know, do I write that up? Do you write that up?
We'll work with our town attorney to draft that.
Write that up, okay, super.
Yep, no problem. And he'll, and he'll queue you in on that as well, and this way you can have some input.
Okay, and now that retailers can no longer give plastic bags to the shoppers, let's help our residents break the habit of single-use.
Mm-hmm.
That's the name of the game, getting rid of all this single-use stuff.
Yep.
And so the single-use plastic bags, help them out by purchasing reusable Keep Yorktown Clean and Green shopping bags. We already looked into purchasing some, and we can, we found a, a nice bag, I was hoping to have the sample to bring to you today. It's not as large as these, it's a.
It's okay.
And it would be 69 cents, that's what it works out to be. For us to purchase them, we can purchase 5,000, the Refugees and Recycling Department can purchase 5,000. So my question to you is, is this something that I should be selling, or am I giving this away to our Yorktown residents? I thought, for example, that those attending the April 7th Town Board meeting, when I do my annual Earth Day presentation with all of our numbers, and I thought we could hand them out then, I thought we could hand them out when our, the team captains that come for Battle of Yorktown to get their supplies in our office, give them, we can hand them out. I can find lots of places.
I think there were some questions on, were there questions on selling them? Did we have some issues on the selling? I mean, I'm fine just giving, giving them.
It was really just practical considerations, more policy questions than legal.
Than legal?
Yeah, so we could, we, you know, we, we looked into it.
Well, I think, I think, maybe in celebration of the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, we can give them for free.
Exactly.
And then we can transition to, if people are interested, maybe we can.
Having them available.
Having them available for purchase for a small fee.
Yeah, so we, for, we can purchase 5,000 bags.
I think it's great.
With the imprint, and it'll cost.
Have we seen a design? Do you have a design for Clean and Green?
Well, I want to use the one.
Yorktown Clean and Green?
Yorktown Clean and Green.
Okay.
Our little wave there. I'm, I'm only going to do one color, you know, it's, it'll keep down the cost, but it'll be $3,800 to purchase 5,000 bags. It's 3,800 because of, of course, we have the setup fee for the printing and the shipping, but basically.
And you have, and you, and you can pay for that out of your budget, correct?
Yeah, I can pay for that out of my recycling budget.
I have no issue.
So that was just the big question about whether we give it away.
I think it's great, and more, but more importantly, where are we with the timing? I mean, can you, how quickly can, are you going to get them in time for Earth Day?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When do you need to put the order in by?
I will have them out, I will, I already put in a request for a purchase order, and we can place the order, and they should be here by April 7th for when I do the Town Board meeting.
Perfect.
So that would be the ideal to do that.
Okay, go for it, I love it.
Good, super. As you just heard from Jim, the parks are overwhelmed with all that they're working on, all that they're doing, but as far as my angle, my angle is that I, I really need to see more recycling done in our town parks. Last year, well, actually in 2018, Refugees and Recycling purchased two 40-gallon recycling receptacles for the YCC, ACCC.
ACCC.
Yeah, 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 six grade school. The track. So we, we purchased those, but we need more in Granite Knolls, and certainly in Legacy. Actually, Todd Orlowsky and I, right before Christmas of 2018, we completed an online application, a grant for, I mean, the Hope Spaghetti Recycling, receptacles for Granite Knolls, we didn't get it. So, but we need to, we need to do a better job in the parks. So I had a thought, I wanted to throw out to you, that maybe we could offer a contest, an art contest, to the Lakeland as well as Yorktown Arts Departments in recognition of the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and, but the, the focus would be for them to create artwork that would encourage recycling, the plastic bottles, the, the sports drink bottles, and then we, the winners, we could maybe one have, one from Lakeland, one from Yorktown, and then we could get the big stickers printed from, like, from maybe Signs Inc. And then use existing receptacles that the parks already has, and then all we would have to do is.
Park superintendent's here, and I, Jimmy, do you want to come up and just provide Park superintendent's here, and Jimmy, do you want to come up and just provide some?
Just an idea throwing out. I don't want to put any pressure on that.
Jim, I know Carol's always commenting on that at the Lions concerts.
Yes, yes.
If you left us like three or four of the portable ones.
Yeah.
We'd make sure they get put out.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, we had purchased those years ago, and the Parks Department is putting those out for the Lions.
But if we had them like in the trailer, we would move them out.
And then they would be automatic.
Any thoughts on a?
I don't mean to hit you with this on the side, but, because I just know that you have so much going on. But I was thinking that by the, you know, you have plenty of trash receptacles, and we could get the.
Push that one away from there. No, no, away, away.
You can purchase, purchase the cover that is just to accept like the plastic bottles, the little holes in them. And then if we had an art contest, and maybe announced it again at the April 7th meeting, and then whenever it came through.
I want to be back from our superintendent.
I'm fully on board. This is a no brainer.
Okay.
You know, but you would have, you already have the receptacles. We just need to make them.
Okay, so then we'll reach out to the school district and engage with Dr. Stone and Dr. Hatter?
Yeah, to see if we could.
Great.
You know, one from Lakeland, one from Yorktown High School. But anyway, the winners would have their posters printed into colorful, large stickers, like 16 by 16. And then we could put those on the trash pails, and then specifically would be able, they'd be able to capture the water and the juice sports drinks.
Remember, I'm never too busy for you. So feel free to reach out anytime. We can discuss this prior to a meeting, and.
No, no, I know, I know. And I just was throwing out this idea. I didn't want to put anything on. Just one last thing is set up a tour for the recovery facility down in Yonkers for recyclables. It's set for April 8th. It's on your calendar. I know Jen has got it on your calendar.
Can we go see the Murph?
Yes, the Murph. After that, we'll go see the incinerator. But I wanted to just let, you know, other Town Board members, if they're welcome to come, or anybody's welcome to come on that day.
Yeah, I think we just need to check with Adam to make sure. I don't know if there's a, if the three rule applies there?
I just.
No, no.
Okay.
Great, so we'll send the invitation to the entire Town Board.
Yeah, yeah.
And is there any, you know, special requirement to go over there and then ask the question, what do you do with the ashes and all that?
Well, no, this first step, this first one is the recovery facility for the recyclables. The next trip will be for the incinerator. And we're all set for, we've got everything set up for Battle of Yorktown, so people.
Are we coordinating Battle of Yorktown with the Big Clean?
Yeah, the Big Clean, yeah. The Big Clean is.
It's a county initiative.
The county initiative, and everything's been filled out for them.
Okay.
They've actually asked us a lot of questions about how we've done it, since we've been doing this for 32 years.
I know, I know.
So they've.
We should be the model for them.
Absolutely.
We should be the model for them. But I just want to make sure that if, you know, that.
No, no, that's all, that's all done.
Great.
Yeah, the idea with that is that if people, other people wanted to volunteer, then through their program, they would know about our program.
Right.
Although we have so much advertising about our program.
Perfect.
And that's been mailed out, and the signs are going up.
Can you get me an image of that as well? Can you email me an image of that? Jenna, can you just make sure that I get an image of that so that we can share it on all of our networks as well?
Yeah, it's on the town's website. It's got a separate page and everything, but certainly on your other things.
We'll put it on our Facebook page, and the Instagram page, Twitter, and everything in between.
That's it. Now go back on schedule.
Kim, thank you.
Kim, actually, real quick, did Tony Grasso reach out to you?
No.
Okay, we were at the Country House last Friday with our veterans group, and Tony comes and joins me. Just scared they're going to keep him there one day. But no, we had a, one of the residents is huge on recycling, Bert, and he did a whole presentation out of the National Geographic about the end of trash and the recycling project. So Tony wanted to try to get some figures on what we've pulled out of the trash stream.
Well, we do, we, I do that each year, and it'll be April 7.
If you give me last year's though, because so he could bring it into, this is what we did.
Or does he want to wait for when I get everything ready for this year?
That could be fine. Or maybe you could even come in too, if you want to come to the Country House one Friday.
Sure.
It's a great place.
Yeah, it's really great.
It's great to see our veterans.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, I'm set, I'm scheduled to go over to Mohansuk School and talk about recycling.
There you go.
The little guys, and we've got the older guys.
Bring Councilman Patel with you.
There you go. Well, he's been in all the schools.
I have many bags, many, many truckload, and then look at our citizen of the year. He was recognized for the county, you know, then.
Yep.
Wonderful. Everybody always talks about you.
All righty.
Thank you so much, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Quinn, next, stormwater maintenance agreement.
Good evening. This first item, excuse me, is for PCSB Bank at 1990 Commerce Street. This application was an existing bank, was reopened as this PCSB. And as part of that project, there's some new impervious surfaces. They put some underground infrastructure in place. They connected to the town stormwater collection system. So as one of the conditions of that approval, and this was a planning board approval, we requested that they add a stormwater maintenance agreement, which obligates the current owner and any future owner to be responsible for the maintenance and inspection, and ongoing inspection and maintenance of those facilities that were installed. So essentially, it's a standard agreement. I worked with Adam on this to set it up for this application. And it requires them to submit a yearly report to show that they're doing the required inspection and maintenance. If, for some, usually we have to send out notifications, which we do towards the end of the year, just to remind everyone that they're due. And, you know, if an applicant refused to do it, we could eventually ask for some escrow to be put up. I mean, that's one of the mechanisms in this agreement to try to drive compliance. So this is a resolution that authorized the supervisor to sign it. The agreement's been created and has been signed by PCSB Bank. So with this resolution, we could have it countersigned, and then they'll file that at Westchester County.
And you reviewed?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Is it timely? I mean, because I haven't seen, it wasn't added to the agenda. So is it a timely resolution? Like, does it have to be now, or can we do it next week?
We could do it next week.
Okay, so then can you please give it to the town clerk, and we'll include it on next week's agenda?
Sure, yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
Easy.
Great.
Anything else on stormwater manage, maintenance agreement?
Nope.
Great. Next, Buckhorn Street, while you're here. Gentlemen, please join us. We apologize for the late hour. We're only a few minutes behind schedule though, so don't chink me.
I made up a little time on the stormwater.
Mr. Taggart, can you join us, please? You had to scoot over to the other side, yeah.
He can't sit in the blue lines. Tommy, Tommy's a stroke.
Mr. Taggart, please join us, because I know this is in front of the planning board as well.
He was referred over to them.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. So this is a proposal for a new single family house on a residential lot, buildable lot. Apparently, at one time, there was a house there. Currently, it's a vacant lot. These developers want to come in, I guess, remove an old foundation, and put in a new foundation, and build a new house. There is a.
Same plan, same plan, or any change in the plan?
No, it's a different footprint.
Okay.
So there's a stream that runs in the back of the property. And so for this application, there's a wetland permit, because they're working in the wetland buffer. There's a stormwater management permit due to the excavation that's required for the earth moving. And there's also a tree removal permit required. They're removing six trees on this property. So I wrote a, I prepared a memo to the board, and I was just reading it over. Because it's a, there's town wetlands, so these are not state wetlands, but because it's a town wetland, it does require a public hearing. So if the board, I'm waiting to answer any questions, but essentially, I'm recommending that the board schedule a public hearing for this application.
This came up to the town clerk's office, because it's over the threshold of the engineering department. What we did is we referred it to the tree advisory, the planning, and the conservation board right off the bat, so they could review it. But it still needs a formal referral out. And then you can set your public hearing.
Mr. Taggart?
So planning got ahead of the, ahead of the game, because I know it was on the agenda, right?
We tried to move it faster than, yeah.
They looked at it last night. I don't have a memo prepared yet, but.
No, from what I understand, there were trees coming down. There are four on the map, but six, six of them are planned to come down, because we've asked two of them, I think, our conservation asked you to pull that down? Who asked you to pull the other two?
Well, we just said that they were dead trees.
Oh, they're just dead. I got you. There was, there was suggestion for wood chips that would need to be silt fenced front and back. I know, John, you wanted a zoning chart on there, a small zoning chart. And they already have a DEC permit, and they're scheduled for conservation at this point.
So the question on that, first of all, when you refer, you're going to refer lead agency, right? Intent, okay. Right, which will go to DEC. Did you get a permit from DEC?
I have a DEC permit.
Okay. Look, a little strange, but so.
Carpe for the horse, right?
Why do we go for the DEC permit?
It was on the memo.
So my recommendation is that you include all of the documentation from that in the referral, so that whoever it goes out to will have that background information that DEC has brought up.
I have a copy of that. You guys forwarded that to me, so I could get that to the town clerk tomorrow morning.
Everybody has a copy of that. Everything we do goes to everybody.
Yeah, actually, my brother down in the Bronx had a copy too, so.
Yeah, I sent it to his neighbors.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll refer and set public hearing?
No, let's get them going.
No, I want to get them going. These guys, I mean, they're spinning here.
One thing, there is no foundation that's got to come out. The foundation that was there was removed, because the building department made them take the house down that was half burnt.
Uh huh.
And really made a hardship on this piece of property, because they should have never forced them to take the house down.
Take the house down.
They should have made them board it up, and that would have been what they did. But they created a major hardship on people that were in foreclosure. So this whole thing has really turned into a real.
Yeah.
SO, so I, anything you guys could do to help move this along quicker would be.
Totally get it.
May I ask you, why the building department asked to remove it? Was it a safety hazard issue or something?
They asked the previous people that were in a foreclosure to remove the house. So the bank stepped in, and they're way upstate. They don't know the area. They came in, took everything, the house, the foundation, everything down. So not realizing that this property now, they created even bigger hardship on it.
You have to update your memo if there's no foundation.
You are questioning hardship to us, or the bank?
I thought there was, but I didn't even put that in our memo.
Okay, so it's not in your memo?
It's as if it's a new, basically, it's an empty lot right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's accurate.
And I think it was removed a few years ago as well, right?
It was, when I came in, it was under two years. Now it's over two years.
Right, okay.
So it was in the compliance time, but then, of course, all the legal maneuvering has pushed it into longer than it was.
Is the old driveway still there?
Yes.
So you're taking that up, and you're putting a new one? And it looks to me on the plan that the new one is slightly not as wide?
We're, we're showing the old driveway. We were leaving the old driveway.
But you're also showing a new driveway.
We're going to recap over that driveway after we're done.
It didn't seem to follow the same footprint as, from what I looked at.
I can look at it.
Okay, you can look at it. You don't have to do it right now.
We've got a couple projects going on.
So the other thing is, I didn't see that the driveway work was included in the, in the limits of disturbance. So if they're, if they're just over, over paving what's there, that's okay. But if they're taking up the old.
No, we're going to over pave the driveway that's there, and extend it down the rest of the way, yes.
Okay. Any, any disturbance that's not accounted for needs to be in the limit of disturbance, I think, probably. And the limit of disturbance seems a little tight to me.
It isn't a limit of disturbance. All the, all the extension of the driveway is in there. He's showing it here. Show it. See, here he's extending the driveway down.
Right, but you have remains of asphalt driveway, then you have this new driveway over top of it. So I don't understand what that means. So I would say, you know, it seems to me you're taking out the old driveway, and you're putting in a new driveway. That's, that's additional disturbance. If that's the case, it has to, has to go in there as well. The limit of disturbance around the house seems tight to me. I don't know what your opinion is on that. Doesn't seem like there's any elbow room to make anything work.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the, I had questions on the wood chips.
Well, doesn't matter. We're, we're in full blown sprint now, so we can actually expand the whole project.
You want to get moving, and you want to keep it going? I'm giving you some comments.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
The, I don't understand what the, it's not clear what the wood chips are for. Are they, they're new, they're proposed?
That was, the engineer said that he was putting wood chips in between, just to filter. It was something that the DEC made him do on another project. I don't necessarily know if it's necessary to be done on this particular project.
Never heard of that, but that's, we'll see that in the DEC permit, which is why it's important to have it. But secondly, that's also part of the filling that's in this buffer and wetland area, which, you know, triggers some type, there's a discussion about mitigation for that as well. Since if you're, if it's not a temporary situation, if it's, you're putting it in there, that's really fill, right? So that all those questions come up. So if you want to get a meeting together offline, so we're not belaboring the point here, we should do that.
And I, of course, would offer, we do meet Fridays with our applicants. So if you want to come in on Friday with building inspector, our engineer, and our town planner, in my office, I'm happy, and our town attorney, we can bring everyone in and try to get everyone on the same page. You just let me know. Jen is behind you. You can schedule it with her. Okay?
Thank you for clarifying, John.
Yeah.
It was very important, you know, you follow, and then move.
I think in the meantime, we can still refer out.
Yeah, we can refer out. But my, my point is, is if they're, they want to move it along and do so, we can talk about some of the comments that are coming up from my office, and kind of get that worked out before you get to a public hearing, before.
Right, before you, yeah, I agree.
Get our formal memo back.
No, no, I agree. But we can still, we can still make, we can still set the public hearing. So we still have time.
Of course, yeah.
If you want to do that, then I would set it for April 21st. We can do time to set it.
I have no problem with that.
So make a motion.
Make a motion.
Yep, please.
You have a motion?
To refer out and set 21st.
Yes.
Second, are all in favor?
Aye.
So we're referred out, and you'll have a hearing on the 21st of April. So please work with our departments between now and then.
Yep.
Before we get to that hearing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Sergio Esposito, President of the Chamber of Commerce. Sergio.
Hello, hello.
Look at this. We're doing all right. Come on. We got a couple of things to discuss with Sergio. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody.
On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, the agenda says two things, but we're going to add a third, which is the Arts and Culture Committee.
Let's do that last, because I think we got Bruce's on his way.
Bruce is on his, okay. Well, DA, let's get here soon.
I know, yeah. He's like, he's watching us.
So first off, we're talking about Spring Fest. What do you want, what's going on with Spring Fest, and how can we help?
So April 25th is our proposed date for Spring Fest, and we just needed to get your approval, town approval for a street closing permit, as well as an SLA permit. So we could, we could file for an SLA permit.
Well, I believe both. Diana, if you can give us some clarification on those?
The SLA permit, you would need the supervisor to sign that, correct, for the state? So you would need authorization to sign whatever documentation you have.
So the last time, what we did with the street fair.
Yes.
Yep.
I just, we're going to need to, we need a resolution.
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
Thank you.
The last time we, we did a, we need, the SLA permit requires a letter from the landlord. In this case, the landlord is technically the town. And so with the street fair, last year was, I came in front of you guys, the previous board, and you passed a resolution, and then the town attorney wrote a letter for us. I think I have a copy of it. Still, I can show you what that said.
Please do.
That just said that, you know, we're authorized, and then we put it in our packet and send it off to the SLA. And the SLA says, all right, great, that's fantastic. You know, but it starts with a resolution from you guys.
Yep, understood.
And, you know, and I guess the resolution would be moving forward. So, you know, because the Spring Fest happens on a, on a yearly basis.
Understood.
But you have to come here every year, right?
I'm sorry?
You come here.
They'll need, they'll need a resolution every year for the supervisor to sign.
But at least you come and tell that something's happening.
They'll need it for each event that you have, correct?
Also for each event, yes.
For the SLA permit?
For the SLA.
If that's what you guys require, sure. No problem.
Every state has.
They're going to require, yeah.
Well, I think if you, if you, if you pass a resolution that those two events have, are authorized for alcohol, then, you know, I don't know if the resolution lasts only a year, or it's just a.
Make it here, you know, I won't.
Whatever you want. For me, to come over and see you guys, it was a pleasure.
All right.
I thought you'd bring some cannolis and espresso.
We'll bring cannolis and espresso.
Jim? Sergio, I got to ask you just reserving the Showmobile as well for those events. Just make sure I have that list.
Yeah, so we, that was passed with the previous administration, that there were five events that you, we normally partner up with, because this would be a co-sponsored event with the town, which it normally is.
Do you have the five events already on your calendar?
Absolutely, we always do, yeah. It's the festival, the, there's a whole bunch of.
Can you, can you get Mr. Rodriguez the five dates, and we can pass a resolution at the next Town Board meeting?
So dates are subject to change, but events are usually the same. So, for example.
What was the resolution that was passed? Diana, do you know the resolution that was passed last year?
I have to pull it up. I don't know off the top of my head.
Ms. Rodriguez, can you work with the town clerk in researching what last year's resolution was, so we can, this way we get you those?
To be quite honest, I'm not really sure if there was a resolution with, I think that it was just.
If you just.
I believe it was in.
Office, I don't know if it ever came.
Just email me the events, the dates. It could be on or abouts. You know, everything is in flux these days.
Yeah.
But we can draft the resolution.
I know, street fair is always Columbus Day weekend.
Columbus Day weekend, yeah.
But, you know, the Spring Fest depends on the holidays, Easter, and all that stuff. It changes, you know?
No problem. No problem. So.
So we're looking at a resolution that, that.
For the SLA.
For an SLA.
You need a second resolution for the, for the Showmobile, and you have to work with the town clerk in order to get this, this street closure permit.
And so I talked to police, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was about to say Chief Noble.
Chief noble, and he just wanted to make sure that we had um, your blessing to, to do the, the street closing, so that was one of his requirements.
And highway superintendent Paganelli?
He's already signed off on it from what I understand.
Has signed off.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We send it, typically we send it to highway and the police chief beforehand and they send us recommendations back. One of the recommendations was with the police chief to have the town board sign on, on closing that particular street for that timeframe.
That's correct.
That's fine.
And the timeframe's 12 to 7. I could send you all this information, but we'd have to close it a little sooner and a little later.
So then if you can just get Mr. Rodriguez the details so he can put together the resolution, we can pass it next week, uh, same with the SLA authorizing the signage.
Um, and, and then the, the, we're going to co-sponsor events, uh, that whatever the events are
For the Showmobile, right.
For the Showmobile.
Correct. I have no issues unless the board, any issues from the board? Since it was past practice?
Yep.
Any issues?
No, no problem.
No? Diana, any, any issues from your end?
No, for me, as long as you agree, we'll issue the street permit, that's fine.
Great. Okay, done.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the list, we have our TV show, which we can, we continue to talk about.
Yeah, I wish Alice was here, because she's a big supporter of it.
She is a big supporter of it.
And so just so we clarify, it's, it's going to be more than just a TV show. Basically, the premise is that we are, it, it started out as being a, you know, we were going to showcase chamber members, but we, if we've since expanded that at my request, um, to include all town assets. It's really, it's going to be this kind of like media presentation of the town assets and regardless of whether they're a member or not of the chamber, um, and the idea is to publicize the town and show off what, what we do have. It would be in some kind of a TV show format.
Right, right.
As far as how it goes, the plan is to do one a month. The plan is to do two segments, it's about a half an hour. The plan is to film it in HD in such a way that it could be shared on, through all media
Multiple platforms.
Multiple platforms. The plan is to have it on our public access channel, um, and, and that's basically it. I think the first, uh, the first segment we wanted to do is Briarheart, White Oak Farm.
I would hope.
And I spoke to him today. I spoke to him today, he's all in.
Great. I, I think it's great. The issue that we continue to grapple with is the role of elected officials in said production. At this point, it was agreed upon that we would not have a role until we were provided additional guidance, uh, I believe from the Association of Towns, as well as possibly the Attorney General's office because of a state law that was passed in 2007.
Seven.
Seven, thank you. I was going to go three or seven, I knew it was one. So I, I think if we continue down with that, that premise in mind, um, you know, again, I, I don't think there's any issues of finding other ways to promote Yorktown to Yorktown, and I think that's what we're trying to do. It's your Yorktown.
And beyond, yeah. Right, and I think, right, that was the name that we came up.
Your Yorktown. That's it.
So, and the idea is to really get this out there and get this, you know, down county and up county and, and everywhere else, um, you know, in order to, to kind of, you know, draw in more
I do believe we have a test case that we were going to send up to the AG's office to get review on, uh, to see if we can get an opinion from them, and if they come back and they say that, you know, elected officials are able to participate and it doesn't violate the intent, which I, we, we go back and forth over this one state law, um, as long as it doesn't, as long as they tell us it doesn't violate the intent of said law, uh, then we would be able to participate.
Which I, I mean, the, the idea is that, yeah, I mean, town officials should be able to participate. I think, um, on behalf of the chamber, I think I make, I make a good spokesman for the town, you know, I mean, uh, you know, I love this place, um, but aside from that, I think you guys are more in line to promote all the assets, and we're not just talking about, you know, businesses and we're going to go see how, you know, people make pizza. That'd be something, you know?
Right, right, right.
But it's also going to be the police, uh,
The parks.
The ambulance corps, parks, uh, just, you, you name it, nothing would be off limits.
Every, oh, the trails.
Let's make sure since, since Commissioner's in the back, he mentioned our great fire department too.
And the, and the great fire department. By the way, I did speak to Chief Swart and, um, he's on board with going back to the Spring Fest. And who could deny Vishnu on TV? Come on, we got to get this law.
I've been to his
I want to see his, I want to see his experiment.
No, but let me ask you, how do you go, how are you going to finance it? That's what I want to know, you know?
So, uh, because of the, the way the laws are, uh, the, really the only way to finance it is that the town has to finance it. You know, because if, if, if we don't, that's up to you guys.
That's the million dollar question.
As a matter of fact, it was
You want a down payment?
As a matter of fact, it was Alice's idea, to be quite honest.
He's not here today, so
I know, I know, unfortunately, and
That's where we're trying, that's, you know, so we still, I think we cleared a couple of hurdles with regards to who was going to be on it, and now we have to clear the million dollar hurdle, and it's not a million dollars.
Only million?
Well, you know, we were, we were willing to put money into advertising and branding of Yorktown, and this is, this is much, uh, much of it, what we are looking to do, highlighting these, so it's, you know
The problem is, is that originally it was going to be a partnership between the town and the chamber.
Right.
But that gets, you get into the weeds with, uh, putting that on the public access channel.
Right.
There's all sorts of legal issues. I mean, it really got precarious with all of this stuff, and we've met, um, on a number of occasions with Alice regarding this, and
Been very involved and supportive.
This was the best way to do it, and the, really, I think it was the only path, right?
It was a little, it made it easier.
Oh, God. You got to see, you got to read this law, it's so generic, it provides absolutely no, no path or guidance, the, the, you know, intent and the head, and the legislative history, you know, basically
It's so restrictive.
With the actual language itself, I mean, it's, it's, it's very upsetting, but, um, at the end of the day, I do want to thank you though for doing the right thing and, and leading this, taking, leading this charge along with Councilwoman Roker and Tommy in the back, TY, um, but I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a good thing for the town. I think we've, like I said, I think we've cleared the, the initial legal hurdles to a point where at least we're somewhat comfortable, and now we're going to have to just go figure out the financing of it, uh, which we'll have a conversation with our comptroller to determine what the best course of action is there.
Right, and like we said, we said we were going to do, uh, one show a month. I forget what the cost was, I think it was, uh, seven or eight? Eight hundred?
Yeah, I seem to remember.
Tommy, do you remember?
Eight.
Eight fifty.
Right.
So, um, so that's what it wa, that's what it would be, and it would air on, of course, the public access channel and
Government access channel.
I'm sorry, government access.
And is this going to be
Tommy, please, uh, speak into the mic back there.
Is this going to be filmed at a different location or only here?
No, it's outside.
We're going to, we're going to go to the
You go to the different sites.
That's why it's important to, to, to have the public officials participate, because it would be nice
Is Bruce here? He's, yeah, he's here, you can stop
He's the man. So, uh, because if, if, if you guys could participate, it would be great, you know, that we go to somewhere together and do an interview or something like that.
I go every day someplace, you know?
Say it again?
I go every day someplace.
Yeah, I know, so it would be great. I mean, you know, I think you guys are the best spokespeople for the town, so
But legally, we just, we don't need to, we just want to be careful, and right now it just doesn't provide any, any guidance legislatively, uh, so we're hoping the Attorney General's office is going to give us said guidance, so
Yes, that's
Now having, so we'll go back to the comptroller, we'll have a conversation with her, see where we can figure out where the monies are coming from, um, and we'll report back to, to you and we can get this off the ground.
Okay, and so it'll be on the agenda for next, next week? Is that the plan?
Assuming we can, assuming we can figure out the dollars behind it, and I want to have a conversation with the rest, with Councilwoman Roker again, um, and again, obviously with the comptroller, to see where that money's going to come from.
Okay.
Okay?
Uh, anything else on that? No?
Nothing on that. Let's go over to the, to Arts and Culture, since Bruce Apar. How are you, sir?
Good, very good.
So we, the Arts, the Arts and Culture Committee is something that, um, I had raised a few weeks back. Ironically, great minds think alike, and the chamber had formed and held their first meeting, I think, the next day or the day before.
Yeah, we had, we had it scheduled.
Something like that. Um, and so we've been working together to see if we can merge, and, um, I think everyone recognizes the importance of merging. We recognize, you know, the, the importance of having this committee, and, and that's, to me, that's, that's what it really speaks towards, i- is how important this is for the community and, and highlighting our, our, highlighting our arts and cultural aspects, and so I wanted to have you come to the board and, and explain to the board what we've ultimately agreed on.
So it's something that we, we started, uh, quite, about a year ago?
Yeah.
About a year ago, um, Bruce did, uh, just knocked it out of the park. We had so many talented people in our first committee, the, the most talented person there was, of course, our councilman Ed Lackerman, I mean, he was there and, uh, I'm buttering, I'm buttering everyone.
I was the only one there.
Diana, you're next.
I, I went on the wrong day.
So anyway
Was it mime school? Is that what it was?
So, uh, so it was pretty So it was a, so you just needed me to guide me here to entertain all of you, that's, it was a little quiet before.
All right, come on.
So anyway, so, um, the idea, the idea came up, um, I think, um, you, once you mentioned it, you know, it was only logical that, that we tried to merge or do something together. I think, you know, what the chamber brings to the table and what the town brings to the table are two separate, very distinct things, and I think together we really could
Complement each other.
Do something, could do something.
Complement each other.
So, um, one thing that Bruce brought up, uh, was that we would like to use a name that incorporates more of the arts, so I think Bruce came up with arts and entertainment.
Which I think, you said this at the board meeting, right? To set, to call it Arts and Entertainment, so that it's all inclusive, right? I think you even, I think you use the same nomenclature, yeah.
So, so the name would be what? The Arts and Entertainment Council?
And so is that the configuration of council?
Well, it would be an advisory committee, is what we're doing.
Okay, whatever it's called, yeah.
You know, you can call it, you know, whatever you want to call it, the Arts, Arts and, Arts and Culture and Entertainment Committee, Arts, Arts and
All right, so we can come up with a name.
Yeah.
So the way, um, you know, right, I mean
Call it the ACE Committee, that's fine, too.
So, um, so the idea is that we're going to do a, a seven member committee. There are going to be what, what we spoke about, there are going to be co-chairs.
Co-chairs, one from the chamber.
One is going to be assigned from the chamber, one is going to be assigned from the town, and then, uh, the remaining five members, two will be picked, will be selected by the chamber, two will be selected by the town, of course, pending town approval.
Oh, yeah, uh, the chamber will recommend two members to us, and the town board would approve, and then the town would, would appoint
Two or so, yeah.
And then the fifth member
Three, right, co-chair and two.
But we'll, we'll, we'll both do a co-chair.
Right.
And then we'll both do two members, and then the two co-chairs will select the fifth member, the
Again, they would re
Recommend, recommend.
You would have to recommend and the board would have to approve it. I still think that it should be, uh, three from the town and two from the chamber, that's, that's, that's my personal
Out of the five members, the remaining five members, and then we would, we would want a, an advisory board, because we had so many people in the room that night, we really don't want to
An advisory board or the advisory board?
An advisory, an advisory kind of committee.
Well, because we, you know
No, I, what I think what happens ultimately is it's an open meeting, so anybody can participate
Right.
In any, in any way they want, it, you know, it's just, it's like anything else that we do here. So just because they're not sitting, having a seat, it's like our senior advisory committee. They, they have a, they have a dais and they have people who are selected as, as the leaders, but they still have, you know, a lot more people there than, than we do here. Right? So they still fill it up with eighty, eighty people, and Joe Falcone, who's, you know, nodding in the back, you know, is, is there every time, so I think, you know, we're not discouraging people.
Are these seven members that, do they have voting rights?
Well, the seven members would be the ones who would
Set policy or whatever, yeah, right.
If, if there's something that needs to be approved.
Right.
But you're, the seven members are the ones who are going to approve any recommendations that would be given to the board, um, and, and the seven members would also be the ones leading the overall body in a, in a specific direction. So if you want to focus on, I don't know, concerts, or you want to focus on an art gallery.
Right.
You know, that's up to the, that's up to the seven members to provide, you know, that leadership, and then
Determining, yeah.
And then hopefully guidance to the town board or, or recommendations to the town board.
And the chamber, the chamber would step in and execute it, and try to execute it.
We, and, yeah, well, we can do it in partnership.
Correct, yeah. Like, one of the ideas is that, that, uh, we were tossing around are, uh, concerts on the patio, right? That is the railroad park, you know, to have concerts at night there, or something to that effect, um, that would be, um, you know
As long as Jim Monarano in the back is on board, absolutely, Jim, don't worry. It's just an idea.
We still got to talk to Jim. We'll talk to Jim, but, um, so that's the idea behind it, so Bruce, are you all right with, with the proposal?
So again, it's
The reason why he wanted, Bruce mentioned that he wanted, uh, an advisory kind of body to the, the seven members in the committee, um, is because to the, the seven members in the committee, um, is because he didn't.
Include the people who were all at that first meeting.
And you can include them. I, I just don't think that it's, I don't, we don't have anything like that. I don't think that, again, you're having an advisory board or the advisory board. They're, they're welcome to participate. It's an open meeting. They're able to come, you know.
You know, someone who went there.
Voice their opinion.
Right, if someone who went there, I went there to give insight.
Absolutely, my insight, my ideas, you know.
If Bruce is all right with it, I'm fine with it.
No, I mean, they're included, so that's all that.
They're included, no one's excluding them.
That's what I was getting at. As long as you keep open and transparent meetings and people can comment, you know.
You can utilize, you can utilize, and I would urge you to utilize our town attorney to make sure that when you're getting this thing up and running, that it's done in accordance with the open meeting law and so on and so forth, but um, I'm, I'm comfortable with one co-chair recommended by the chamber, one co-chair approved by the town, two members recommended by the chamber, and then three from the town. I think that's a, I think that's a fair blend and balance.
That's fine by me.
And that gives you a total of, of seven members.
Right.
In, in total. And Councilman Patel, issues?
When are you ready?
All right. We're, the name, we're going with ACE?
Let me actually, anybody?
Arts, Culture, and Entertainment Committee?
Yeah, that's fine, ACE, yeah, ACE, actually, I like that, yeah, I do like that.
You're our ACE, there you go.
Okay.
Sergio, it could be like ACE is high. You know? Like in casino, ACE is high.
Anything, anything you need, Councilman?
Roll the word two ways.
Some questions?
No, the, this is part of the committee.
This would be a new, a new town, new advisory committee for the town.
Remember, we had, you know, the advisory committee or whatever, the environmental thing, did it require any insurance or anything, place to do maybe?
No, it would be, Mr. Rodriguez, they'd be under our town insurance, I'm guessing. Is there an insurance issue that we have to worry about? Because it's a town entity, right? It's a town recognized committee?
Yeah, yes.
So then why didn't you have the, the envi, you know, the energy and what was that?
The climate smart community, S.A.S.C.O.R.
Yeah.
They've, maybe we've appointed a number of people on there, we're appointing one more, I believe, next week who came to meet, and they're meeting next week.
So just so we're clear, this is in partnership with the chamber and, you know, that, that was the whole idea of how we were gonna come to merge it.
Absolutely, and I just want to thank the chamber and its members and its board of directors for being willing to come to the table and working with the town on this.
All about the town.
Because we don't need duplicative advisory committees, this doesn't make sense.
No, listen, it just strengthens it that you're behind it, believe me.
So, it's, yeah, absolutely, and well, again, I think we complement each other on what we're able to do, so, uh, I am.
No, thanks.
I am very comfortable, are you comfortable?
Absolutely, yeah.
Councilman Patel, so then we will, we will move this to next week's.
Arch and signs goes even better with me, but arts and culture is everything.
Mr. Rodriguez will create a resolution to move it on to next week's town board meeting and formally pass it.
Hey, all the colleges have got arch and signs before.
Very excited, thank you. Awesome. All right, appreciate it.
What else?
You're done, you're over, you're, you're, you're 10 minutes over.
Thank you.
We're gonna bring back the Parks and Rec Commission.
All right.
All right.
They were here, right? One of them?
They were here.
They were.
Thanks.
No, we're very excited, it's gonna be good, it's gonna be, you know, and uh, with sound and music, don't forget it's coming back to the Yorktown.
I'm telling you, I could see Charlie up on Yorktown.
Why are you sitting here before?
Charlie already said, Charlie already said he wants to.
Second shift.
He wants to do the camp.
Yeah, no, great.
That's what he wants to do, he wants to, he wants to do the camp.
I didn't see the, the.
I know, we're doing all right. We're catching up here. All right.
Do you have an insurance problem, by the way?
Yeah, right.
We do have an insurance problem, but, we do?
None, definitely.
Okay. Mr. Morano, welcome back.
Gonna be back.
Welcome back, Mr. Carter.
Oh, what happened to my?
The work hat?
Did this the last one, okay?
The insurance.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Councilman Lachman, uh, you wanted to put this on the agenda, so why don't we have a conversation about it?
So, after, after my attendance at the last few, uh.
We have a, we have order, please? We're almost done, I know it's late, we just want to get through this, thank you. It's the first time I ever use that.
You see the loudest one, I hear it, you know that? He went full of sleep.
All right, Councilman Lachman.
Thank you. So after, after attendance at the last few Parks and Rec meetings and some of the comments back and questions from emails of people sending us stuff, uh, I thought that it would be, uh, behoove us for our citizens to open up, uh, the process of having the, the meetings televised. One of the issues that has been coming up with a lot of the people, when I asked them, hey, have you been able to get over there to, you know, to voice your opinion? And it's like, well, I have kids. It's bedtime, it's homework time, it's dinnertime, so the people that it's affecting aren't able to really keep, keep involved. Uh, I know someone that we spoke about that, uh, that spoke to, that we are interviewing for Parks and Recs, had even suggested that, hey, live streaming would be good, where you could actually get questions up and, and be able to answer things, uh, from, from the, uh, from the people at home. But I'm just seeing a lo, a big lack of information and how it's, uh, decimated out to the people, and then we want to, you know, look at the transparency of it and say, hey, how can we get this information out so people could see it firsthand, understand it, and, and be able to, uh, really, uh, understand and have an ownership in our parks and recreational activities.
Mr. Morano?
Just a quick question, what would be the budgetary restraints, um, when it comes to filming, uh, these commission meetings? Is that something that's coming out of my budget?
Senior Advisory Committee does 175 a, a month, is what I believe Tom charges. Um, and, you know, that's something that we're gonna have a conversation with Pat and, and make a determination.
Yeah, that's certainly something that I have not budgeted for.
Can I ask you, I, I was not aware the senior advisory, 125 each, now, budget for their, their program, the seniors program, where the money come from?
Um, I, I believe that the town authorized that payment as part of their overall contract.
Okay, so the, the total, okay, all right, okay.
So when you look in the budget, you'll see the budget line specifically, Diana, correct? Because you're, you sign off on that?
Okay, yeah, no.
So it's built, it's built directly into the budget for Tom.
No, but it, it would not, never happened like this before, that.
Diana, do you happen to know if planning, actually, John, do you know if planning is, uh, televised? Is, is that out of your budget or is that out of a televised budget?
So we do have a televised budget. That's, which, I, I mean, we do have a, I know, I'm stating we have a televised budget, so it doesn't come out of your department then? I don't know.
I sign off on everything that Tom pretty much does unless he's doing something specific for his department. So, thank you. So plant, town board planning and zoning, I don't sign off on, do I, Tom?
Yes.
Do I?
Yes.
I know I do planning.
All right, so you sign, so you sign off on the town board zoning?
But anything else would be done by that department head, it would come out of their budget.
So then, so for senior advisory, you don't sign off on his, for senior advisory?
Yeah, I do.
You do?
Because it was approved by the town board last.
Right, so.
So that would be up to the town board then to say, do we want to put it into the television budget or do we want to?
Or it has to come out of his budget, but right now it's not in his budget, so.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
I've been the most outspoken against this for various reasons. First and foremost, obviously, I'm a very strong believer in politics and the parks system being separate. The, the reason why we're in independent commission, you know, as opposed to some of the advisory boards. What I've noticed that these meetings, and when I used to go to the planning board meetings as the liaison to the planning board, people act differently when they're on camera and when they're on a live mic and everything else. And I think that that would ruin the interaction between what we have at the clubs and what we have at those meetings. I think it's gonna politicize the meetings, it's gonna politicize some of the things that are on the agenda. I think that we can be open and honest without having it to be televised. We have minutes that are available to everybody, the meetings are published, we know, we meet the first Thursday of every month, and any issue that comes up that would be of public interest, more so than, say, something like with the clubs and our day-to-day operations inside the parks, we can always come to a, a town board work session like this to have conversations with you. I ju, I just believe I'm wholeheartedly against it for that reason alone, never mind the fact that I've seen certain aspects in the last couple of year or so where people have tried to use the parks as a political chip. I think what you guys, the benefit of having a separate commission is we get to make the tough decisions. We're not elected officials. And I don't believe, not anymore, that any of us right now have any aspirations to be an elected official. We join the park because we bring a cer, the Parks Commission because we bring a certain expertise. And that expertise is utilized in order to make those decisions to isolate you from the people that want to have you make a decision that's going to affect them and affect possibly your next election. So, you know, I just wanted to tell you that I'm adamantly against it, and I believe several of our Parks and Rec Commissioners are also against it.
Gentlemen, anything you want to add? I mean, Joe, you're on the, you're.
Um, it doesn't really matter to me, I mean, we do it for the senior advisory board already, and, uh, you know, it's, like I said, it's, everybody has their opinion on it, but, uh, yeah, doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Mr. Talbert, any comments you want to make?
I'm also, uh, kind of indifferent on it. If it was to take place, I, I'd like to see it take place next year, not this year, give us some time to get ready for it, but, um, I don't have an extreme issue with it. I do understand what, uh, Commissioner Kaminsky is saying, there will be some grandstanding that goes with TV. We've seen it, but you, it's not publicized at our meetings, and, and we know there's certain things that we're talking about that we would see more of if it was on TV. We can get around it, though. It can work.
Uh, can I ask you?
Councilman?
There was some email, I received it, you know, and I think it was from one of the councilmen, Lachman or somebody, and you also, there was some summary of meeting of this, you know, the board of, this is Parks and Recreation Commission or the entire board. I don't know who wrote it, that one, you know, it, uh, just, just send it to me.
It might, it might have been the, when I go to a meeting as a liaison.
He sends minutes.
I type up minutes as I.
He wrote it like that? I don't agree with it, it was the, it was.
I'll show you my computer.
He sends, he sends notes to the board members, so I know what happens.
Edit and delete, I mean, but, uh, some things, you know, you know, it's just a little T D, H O D, like that, I think was very difficult to digest for me, really, that kind of summary, okay, you know?
Well, I do it, I do it just to try to highlight each, each item on the agenda.
I didn't do it my $10 billion project in the research, okay? I didn't do that much like that, so it may be something good over here, I don't know.
Right.
But, um, you know.
We did, we did receive some emails from folks, uh, which had a lot of misinformation in there. I was on the receiving end of them, uh, that the town board was raising.
I actually, I actually forwarded them all out for the.
You saw those?
Yeah, that, that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about. I mean, the, that's where, and I got, I saw the emails and people, like you said, were misinformed in what it is, and actually, we were accused at the last meeting of trying to make money off the kids, which I took a lot of offense to. The, but that's an example of the tough decisions that the commission has to make, where we get to make those decisions not for the kids that are playing in the park today. We make those decisions for the kids that are gonna be playing in the park 10 years from now, 15 years from now, when we have to replace the turfs that are on those fields. And one way or the other, people are gonna pay for it. So you're gonna pay for it now, or 10 years from now, somebody's gonna have to pay for a bond, and in my opinion, that's something where we don't know what the economy's gonna be like 10 years from now. We don't know who's gonna be sitting at this table 10 years from now. So it's our job as a commission to protect what's gonna be happening in the future now, and that's good business sense.
You, you know, I.
But that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about, where the commission gets to isolate you from making those kind of tough decisions, where it's not a political feedback, where you guys are making a decision, it's a commission that's making a decision, and you get to send them to us.
And I think that.
I have a comment, you know? Uh, you know, when we had this land purchase and the build the granite north, you know, and then at the end, there was some campaign going on like that, and they, oh, this guy is not for the ball field and, I forget about it, what I say. The last memo, I had it written to the newspaper, and I have a public record that how are you gonna pay for it? And not a single person had answered for that one. And now, you know, it's a wonderful ball field, and all these guys, they work very hard, the town, and, you know, even the town money, you know, and it's wonderful, but we have to be always with the keen eye, how are you gonna manage it? And that needs the money, how are you gonna operate? I think, you know, you have done a good job so far, and continue to do, really, the commissioner, you know, because if you don't have the money, you can't do anything, okay?
Well, as you know, parks is a public service, okay?
Yes, that's good, I agree with you.
And in a parks department, if you break even, you're doing fantastic.
Right.
All right, so we're not about making money, but.
No, I agree with you.
Like Pat had said, we, we have to worry about the future, so, I mean.
And see, and that, and that's part of, like, I, I agree wholeheartedly with that. And I thought that, you know, I thought that the way you just presented it here, and even the way you presented it at the meeting, was, that is the stuff that the people in the town need to hear. That is the stuff that I think needs to be out there saying, hey, you know what, we're looking at 15, 20 years. And I know, uh, I know what caused that, from what I understand, was the fact that Jim was saying, hey, and, and I, I think we had spoken in the meeting prior about, let's see, you know, maybe you guys can project a couple of years out. And Jim put an example, and the example got taken as, as, uh, the, the whole thing, hey, this is what they're doing. And it just got, it did get blown out of proportion, and I think that, uh, you know, hearing the, the board saying, you guys handled it right, and I, you know, I know people in the audience did not want to hear what you were saying, and that happens here, that happens there, people have their own agenda, but that's a public right. That's, that's part of the open meetings, that's the transparency. No offense to everyone out there still, but I don't, I don't agree with everything everyone says. That doesn't mean they don't have the right to come up and, and, and say it, and talk to us, and email us, and, and get there, and, you know, I just think that from, from the, the people who this impacts, the people that would be most interested in what's happening at the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings are the people that can't usually make it because of the reason that they're interested in it, they're kids.
What you just said is, is exactly why it shouldn't be televised. These people also have their representatives, right? Shrubok, YAC, Y Y A C, they have all these people that they've elected to be their representatives inside their organizations that are here at the meetings. We have an open meeting. Anybody can show up at our meeting, we welcome everybody's opinion, their opinions, their input, you know, Jim has an open door policy, he takes phone calls, emails, you know, all of us are available at any time. And like I said, if there is a specific issue that you felt needed to be publicized, you're the liaison. You just tell us, listen, why don't we bring this to a, to a work session meeting, or may, bring it to a town board meeting, where Jim is, can give you presentations on the inventory we have, and what work that we need, that we want to get done, or need to get done in certain areas, and if we want to talk about fees, we can bring them up here too. But I just think when you actually publicize every single one of those meetings, you just said, you want people live streaming, asking questions. You're gonna have the, the people that, when you guys had.
Well, that, that was a suggestion, and it's not, it's not, look, it could be.
We have a difference of opinion, okay?
Crazy, right, I know, it could be crazy questions coming in, it, you know, but it's, if you use reverse logic, you know, maybe we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't televise our town board meetings then, because people want to, you know, get up and politicize, and that's not.
Well, you guys are politicians, so that's the difference. I'm not a politician, and we're not on the commission to be politicians, we're on the commission to make the best decisions for the town's parks and recreation system.
But, but the town board meetings being televised is not for us to politicize. It's for us to make decisions in a clear and transparent way, and to have this discussion being out there. You know, I did not necessarily agree with televising the work sessions at first. Susan?
Absolutely.
I, I think, I think, I.
No problems.
Don't, don't faint, I think she was right. I think Susan had a great idea, I think that there's, you know, because I've had people comment, and I never realized it until, oh, you know, I was watching the, uh, the work session, and I learned X, Y, and Z, and it helped me with this, and helped me with that. I, you know, I just think that there's, there's a, a benefit to it. I know that with every benefit, there's a cost. I.
It's a fundamental difference of opinion on whether or not politics should be involved in parks. You guys are politicians, the town board, work sessions, everything else, I agree with you, I think they do, they should have been televised. I think by televising the Parks and Rec Commission, you're politicizing the parks, and that's my difference of opinion.
How, how does it actually politicize it, per se, in your, for your definition? If we're, I'm there as a liaison, I don't really have to talk, uh, you know, and say anything, but where, where's the?
You know, may I say in between something when you are done?
Well, are you talking about how other people will come up to, to vocalize their agenda?
Yes.
It's going to be grandstanding, and it's going to be people that are gonna be doing
it for the cameras, not doing it for the benefit of the parks.
You know, we are here to do good thing for the children, but if somebody is, you know, in, try to, you know, financially benefiting himself, doing directly or indirectly, aye, take me out of that thing, okay? I'm saying very loud and clear, don't come with a nickel. You come with a nickel, if I take it, I give you $100. This is my ethics and this is morale, and if this thing comes out, don't ask me the question, this is why I have.
What do you feel about televising that?
Yeah, that, no, it's, it's including with the televised, because some of the people, they want to be a member, and they came here hours for away, and then you just put it in here, and they never show up on a one-year meeting like that, and a big, big hoopla, it's not good for the community, you know? And if the person is interested in, in reaching himself.
Is, uh, every town advisory committee board meeting televised? I'm not sure, is every?
The policymaking ones have. So, uh, there's policy made in planning, there's policy made in zoning.
My only question is, are there work sessions also done? Because if it's not, maybe that's something you should consider if you're gonna do fees for that, add and end altogether.
The, uh, the planning board is, work session is not televised.
And ZBA is not either, right?
ZBA only meets once.
ZBA only meets once, they do it all together.
So they don't really have a work session in the area?
Correct.
Joe, is there a question regarding other towns or our town specifically?
Uh, basically our town, yeah.
What about where you came from, did they televise?
No, there was no televised, uh, commission meetings, when they were a commission.
Did they televise any of the other, uh, like, planning and zoning?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Even Westchester County Parks Board, I believe, is not televised, you know? And they meet once a month.
It would be slightly unprecedented, but it's up to you guys.
Up to you guys.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board? Comments from the town attorney? Nothing? All right.
I'd like to, you know, put it off here, the opinions of Councilwoman Roker and Councilman Diana.
Yeah, we'll take it up again.
And then, uh, also if, uh, you know, the rest of the board, if, you know, we could hear a yea, nay, or indifferent from the rest of the commission would be of interest to me as well.
Uh, can I address that?
Yeah.
Yeah, this came up twice, um, once, um, while I was a commission member, uh, it was shot down, um, and then, uh, then again, when I did come on board as superintendent, and, uh, there was no formal vote, uh, but once again, uh, it was a nay.
How do, how do you feel as superintendent?
Uh, you know, I'm here to serve the, the town, uh, and if, if you all determine that that's what we need to do, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay.
It's not his decision, don't.
Okay, I will, okay, I apologize for putting you on that.
Okay.
Guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is it a town board decision or is it a Parks and Rec Commission decision?
Town attorney?
In the, um, 1968 enabling resolution, the board specifically reserved to itself, um, the powers of general regulation, which adds to the town board, may seem expedient and necessary, so with that language, uh, it seems pretty clear that the board intended to reserve itself that power.
Anything else? Good?
Stay for the next one, right?
You can, no problem. Uh, so we'll go right to the next one, which is, uh, we're doing a code update, I'm gonna ask our town attorney, if you can jump in, I know my name's on here.
Start by you.
Uh, we have two things that were brought to the board from our park superintendent, and I believe Commissioner Talbert was in that meeting as well. Uh, first and foremost, is the town smoking, uh, code, smoking law, um, I think, we're not even, fact of the matter is, it's just obsolete. Uh, according to the town code, you can go downstairs in our basement and enjoy a nice cigarette, or cigar.
At the kitchen.
In the kitchen, which we are renovating into more office space. Um, yeah, I, I see people in the back. Um, so clearly does not, is not in compliance with the Clean Indoor Air Act, uh, so we're trying to, uh, and with the leadership of Jim, uh, update our code, and I believe the town attorney, we sent out in, a proposed draft to the board.
Yeah, draft local law, which you have in front of you, um, circulated, and it would remedy the violation of the, uh, Clean Air Act, um, by deleting those sections and amending it to add six, six new sections, um, to prohibit smoking on certain town property, along with enforcement capabilities.
Adam, I thought you did a great job on that, it looks wonderful, it's about time that we, we address this. Uh, this came up years ago, uh, with the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, and.
Yeah, it was Mr. Kaminsky who was the champion of this, correct?
Correct.
That is correct, this one I feel very strongly for.
So the, the other thing that I personally am very happy to see in here also is the town's code acknowledging, uh, e-cigarettes and vaping. Uh, it would also, uh, declare smoke and vape-free zones. Uh, the following town-owned areas and any area owned by the town of Yorktown located within 70 feet thereof are hereby designated as smoke and vape-free zones. These include town-owned buildings, picnic areas, sports, sport areas and fields, including but not limited to tennis facilities, tracks, volleyball facilities, baseball fields, uh, and basketball courts, pool facilities, and playgrounds. Uh, smoking and vaping are strictly prohibited in any smoke and vape-free zone within the town of Yorktown, um, which I think is a vast improvement to allowing, huh, smoking downstairs in the basement, uh, but also acknowledging and recognizing e-cigarettes and vaping, because we do have a great organization, uh, such as Alliance for Safe Kids, and I do, and I should have led with this earlier, Alliance for Safe Kids, their Save a Life event has been postponed, uh, I did talk to Tristi Kushner earlier, uh, it has been postponed, uh, just in FYI, but considering that we've had such a great organization championing, uh, the education of the dangers of vaping and e-cigarettes, uh, great to see that is included in our legislation as well.
Yes, just one thing I, I brought up with, um, the attorney, we should add in their pavilions also.
Yes, town facility pavilion, yeah.
The town building? Would it be, I think it would be.
Is it a building?
Park pavilions?
All right.
Park pavilions?
Parks pavilion, maybe.
Does it say not limited to?
They are in the parks, and we're not allowed to smoke in the park anyway.
Town-owned buildings, picnic areas, I think it would qualify as a picnic area.
Put a sign, you know, sign, no smoking.
Does it hurt to just add the word?
No, I'm fine with it. Can you just add pavilion? There's no problem.
You know, most of the people, there was two e-cigarette, but most of the people don't know what is inside, really. And they give the trade name and all kinds of stupid thing, really. And in the end, they put stuff, you don't even, you don't even, cannot pronounce it, really. It's really bad, you know?
Yeah. We've had a lot of seminars, again, in the community, trying to educate the public about the dangers of vaping and e-cigs.
And it grows down.
But with that being said, we now have a proposed, we have a draft law that would acknowledge it within the code. And at this point, I think that we want to, Diana, how would you?
Put it out, put it out to referral.
Do you want to refer out, set for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to, thank you. So we're going to refer out and also set it for a public hearing. We had already set the date.
April 21st.
April 21st would be the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for championing.
Pat, great job. I know this was one of the, again, so I think you also championed the online registration too during those meetings as well. So I'm just checking off boxes.
We're one of a team, there's no, there's no I on our team.
That's good, man. I appreciate it.
All Matt did when it came to parks was take old business and Pat Kaminsky's stuff.
Just Pat Kaminsky's stuff, not Matt Talbert's.
I'm built to get things done. It's between Matt and I making sure that we get things done.
Okay, next, the other issue, Mr. Town Attorney, I don't see this.
Athletic field lights?
Athletic field lights. Another, another one that was brought to.
Which one?
Another one that was brought to our attention is because of the upgraded technology that's being used, the code doesn't match the use of technology. John Taggert is starting to.
Mosey, mosey up there.
Like a lion, I'm a little, I'm a little afraid.
I wasn't able to get the paperwork to Mr. Taggert until today.
Okay.
So I found it all and we put it all together and.
So we still need to communicate regarding that. And I think John wanted to do an over, a more wider, take a wider look at our lighting code.
Okay, so you want me to put this on the back burner? You want, you need more time to review.
Well, yeah, I have more to comment.
I mean, right now, I think my understanding from our conversation was, it was, John, just jump in there. My understanding was we were just going to have a conversation about updating it to make sure that what we have is in compliance. If we want to do a second round, I mean, that's fine, I think we, you know, I want to make sure that what we have though recognizes the, the technology that's being used and this way it conforms to code.
Do you want to refer out what Adam's done already, not set the public hearing, give a chance for John to get his comments, have a second?
You can refer it out internally to town departments and so forth.
Also, I don't think that, I don't think it was, I don't think it was distributed to the board.
I have it, which is not a requirement to, you know, authorize the public hearing to be set, that's only the seven calendar day notice requirement.
That's fine.
Anyway, but, but to the point, I, it's a very simple change, it's basically deleting three words.
Correct.
Fully shielded and. So, you know, it's.
That's all I've required.
That's all you had requested from this park superintendent and.
Yes.
Was that on behalf of, I'm guessing since you were here, was on behalf of the commission as well?
Yes, it was something the commission had spoken about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaminsky, Vice Chairman of the Commission.
Just to make it clear, well, it's, it's section 200-6H, just in case anyone's interested in this section.
All right, so we're just, it's a deletion of three words to make sure that the current lights we have at Granite Falls conform to town code. That's really all I'm trying to do.
Do we need to change the height on that though, too?
Is the height an issue?
There's no, no.
There's no height stipulation.
How about the glare from far away?
And similar to the smoking, you know, when, when you peel it back and take a closer look, there's certainly things that we might want to change going forward. So, you know, we might want a broader question going forward in the future, but for now, I would love those, those three words to be deleted from the code.
I mean, if that's the, if that's the will of the commission and the super, I'm fine moving it together, both the public hearing and refer out. And if we have more that we, that you want to bring back to us, John?
Well, it's quality of life issue, so, you know, I'd like to think it out a little bit because it does have ramifications on neighbors and so forth.
But I thought that the LED lights, the spill was not an issue anymore because of the technology.
I don't think Mr. Taggert has seen the pictures that we provided, have you seen those?
I've seen.
For spill.
Yeah, the spill is clearly with the, with the LED lights, you can control the spill off the site.
Correct.
Much better. I think the question is the shielded portion of the law is there so that the light source doesn't meet the human eye as much. And to sort of protect, it does protect a lot of the spill, but also I think some of the folks that have made some commentary on it are getting that objectionable.
Agreed, but some of the folks that are making the commentary, either on the same level, living on the same level as, as Granite Falls or they're below it.
Pat?
Yes. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that a sports arena or lighting will be without that, that impact.
Right.
I just want to take a look and understand the language and the, and the intent of changing the language to understand better. Maybe there's some different, differing language that can serve us better. That's all, that's all I'm getting at.
Specifically for the system that we chose, their technology is, is beyond just LED. They have specific lenses that are, that are directing light at that, at that area alone instead of it having shielding, so.
I think one of the issues, I mean, I live Mohawk Lake and I look straight up at it.
Right.
So I can tell the guys when the lights are left on.
Good, do you?
What's that?
You?
Yes, only one time.
I see from the.
We don't want to waste electricity.
It is a, it's a field, so the lights are surrounding the entire field.
Right.
So no matter what angle, if you're, if you have a line of sight to that field, you're going to see the lights. It's like when you're driving on a Taconic, I remember the first time when we had the lights, we did the light test, everybody was slamming on their brakes because they didn't know what it was, it looked like Close Encounters of the Third Kind. It's real and I was laughing about it, but that's the, the issue. It's, it's one of the highest points in the town. And anybody that has a high point is going to see lights out of there, but it's not spill. So I totally appreciate what this gentleman's saying, I was actually telling everybody we have to talk to him about this. So, for my time on the planning board, I know you're the light expert.
But.
Well, you know the quote about it. So the, I mean, I think it may have to be tweaked so that we don't open it up to other issues with other lights.
Can we bring, are you going to, how much time do you think you're going to need to review?
Not much time, you know, I just have to get, get the, get the information and then really think and talk about the language a little bit, that's all.
So can we try?
What you're doing is you're eliminating the, completely the requirement for shielding.
Okay.
You know, maybe you want to back off and say something to the effect that to the extent practicable, right?
Right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Understood. So do you, so can we?
Can we refer it out?
Yeah, go ahead, I can, I can deal with the.
And, and John, that certainly makes sense because, you look, the lights at Granite Falls are different than the lights we may have at Shrubok or maybe different than the lights we have at 202.
I would rather not refer it out to be, and I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize. I'd rather not refer it, I'd rather a more comprehensive piece of legislation with your review. I mean, is that something that we can possibly put on for next week or do you need more time?
Yeah, we can put it on for next week and I'm happy to meet with anybody that just wants to, you know.
Let's do this.
It's really just a matter of talking it out and everybody understanding.
Just, let's look at it five dimensionally, let's just make sure we're doing it the right way. If we can, if you can find time, I know everyone's very busy, but if we can try to get this with the goal of.
I mean.
Understand though, you know, it's, I want something over to, we have to go to the town clerk for next week's meeting by Friday. If that's something that you think we can accomplish, then, then let's, then I'm fine holding off until next week.
Do you guys want to meet with me or?
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
Sure.
All right, well, you can, you guys can coordinate offline, which is fine, but just understand, I'm, I'm fine with developing a more comprehensive piece of legislation, I think which is best for the community. And John, I appreciate your insight, of course, always.
The answer may be exactly what you proposed.
No problem, I get it. Absolutely get it. And so in the meantime, with, which I don't want it to just go into perpetuity. So if we can work towards the deadline of Friday so that it's on next week's agenda with a more comprehensive piece of legislation or a reviewed piece of legislation, I'm absolutely fine with that. Good?
Just thank you for hearing me on both of these items.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing it forward, that's what we're here to do, right? That's what we're here to do.
Absolutely.
All right.
I'm not going to be available, these guys are going to be available.
Pat will advise. Great, all right, so we do have some resolutions, is there anything? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate all your, your efforts and hard work. Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. All right, we do have several resolutions and I want to apologize, some were added after closed session. Let's go through what's on the resolution. How many microphones do you need, Diana?
Which one he added after, I don't have the paper.
Okay, so use, we're going to go off of what's here right now?
Oh, all right, I have it.
Yep, I have that one as well. So we're going to go off what we have from the town attorney. Excuse me?
Use your.
Okay, can we have order just so we can get through this quickly, please? Thank you.
I can email if you want to.
From the town attorney, be it resolved, the town board authorizes the town supervisors sign an agreement with NCI Emergency Response Answering Service for the year 2020 at the yearly amount of $1,629.46 for the Yorktown Consolidated Water District. Now continue. From refuse and recycling, whereas when the, oh, good, I'll just read the, it's already on here. This is a resolution, let's see, therefore the following vehicles are to be scrapped by Brookfield Resource Management, Elmsford, New York. It's a 1998 Ford Crown Victoria, a 2000 Ford Crown Victoria and a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria. From the comptroller, resolve that Rachel Marchiono, oh, did I, I hope I got that right, Marchiono has permission to attend the 2020 New York State Comptroller's Office Town Finance School to be held in Saratoga Springs, May 14th and May 15th. Do I have a motion?
Is that the Saragota, is it race course or this is?
Yeah.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That's actually preseason for the track up there.
Now we have, we have two, three other, four, four others, and I apologize again, these all. The first is to authorize the supervisors sign a grant application for the local government records management in, management improvement fund. And that specifically is for our town clerk, you want to explain what that is?
It's just, we're going to apply for a grant for some records management in our building and finance department. It's just basically to scan some more of the records and get it onto our laser feature program.
Laser feature program. I'll continue. And this is also from this evening, that came at a closed session. Be it resolved that Andrew J. Bergen of Yorktown Heights, New York is hereby appointed laborer job class code 0425-05 within the Parks and Recreation Department to be paid from Yorktown CSA Salary Schedule A, Group Five, Step One, which is $44,154 annually. Be it further resolved that this appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12, no more than 52 weeks, commencing on the first date of appointment on March 16th, 2020. Next resolution, be it resolved that James Cottrell, Tree Trimmer and MEO and Highway Department has permission to attend International Society of the Arbor Culture Certification Training in Millbrook, New York and Town Board's approval of training expense of $475 and certification exam expense of $280. And lastly, I will read in its entirety, whereas the town building direct, town building maintenance filed an application for a certificate of appropriateness from the Yorktown Landmarks Preservation Commission, YLPC, to perform work on the exterior staircase of the northwest side of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. And whereas on January 17th, 2020, the YLPC issued a C of A for work with five conditions and whereas since January 17th, 2020, employees from various town departments have worked diligently to address all concerns and conditions raised by the YLPC. And whereas the town board has reviewed the town building, excuse me, the town building maintenance proposed plan to repair the staircase, including the damaged corners of the stones of the facade of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. And whereas it is important for the damaged staircase to be repaired as soon as possible in order to provide, among other things, an additional means of ingress and egress for users of the, of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. Now therefore be resolved that the town board's building maintenance department proposed plan to repair the staircase, including the damaged corners of the stones of the facade of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center is consistent with the general design and character of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center.